Time I'd like to open up the regular session of the City of Crescent City's Council meeting and ask our city attorney if we have anything to report out of closed session.
No.
Thank you.
No actions to report out of closed session, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, could you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Holly.
Here.
Councilmember Westfall.
Here.
Councilmember Shalong.
Here.
Mayor Protem Enya.
Here.
And Mayor Murray. Here, thank you. And I've asked Councilmember Shalong to lead us in the pledge.
Stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to everyone here in the audience, at home watching on the computers and those who will watch future broadcasts on Channel 4. And we have no acknowledgements tonight, but there is one item on the consent calendar that I would like to ask for consensus to pull because it's item number four. We're advertising for appointing members to the Solid Waste Task Force and the paper advertised that we'd accept applications until June 25th, so I'm asking to pull that. Is that agreeable with everyone? Okay. All right, so we'll move to the consent calendar.
Move to approve items 1 through 3.
I'll second that motion.
Is there public comment on that?
On the consent agenda?
Yes, on the consent agenda.
I'd like to report something.
Please identify yourself.
Richard Miles and I was in the City. As many of you know, I was out of town and I received a phone call from Mary Wilson because we don't have, sometimes we don't have a quorum for meetings. In order to have a quorum this time, unfortunately, I was asked to use my phone time to call in so they could have a quorum. I think it's essential that these two other positions are filled. Also, the Chair, I think the City should talk to Irene Tynes. She hasn't informed Mary Wilson of her absences and the discussion was held that because if she misses one more meeting, we have the authority to drop her from the task force. So I think it is essential that before July, you people appoint something to the task force.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll close. We have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Westfall.
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong.
Yes.
Councilmember Holly.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Enya.
Yes.
And Mayor Murray.
Yes, thank you. We don't have, we have no reports, so Communications, this is your opportunity for public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the Council is not able to undertake extended discussion on or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name and whether you're a city or county resident for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there public comment? Jenny, you can come first.
My name is Jenny, I live in the county.
Could you state your last name too?
I'm sorry, my name is Jenny Allen, I live in the county. Pleasing of the public, don't increase sewer rates. Jim Barnes projects. Jim asked about employment questions involving his 50 acres behind Walmart in 2006. Jim receives legal advice on conflicts of interest and is warned to keep clear of getting involved in the WWTP. However, Jim spearheads WWTP project. The lift stations, also in 2006, Stover Engineering did a report for Jim and concluded that the lift stations cannot support Jim's projects. Maintaining lift stations. As Public Works Director, Jim has the authority to authorize emergency work over $300. So is any work over $300 due to Jim's projects? How much has the CSA spent in the city and county since 2006 on lift stations maintenance? Did the costs rise from $30,000 in 2006 to $70,000 by 2009? What is the cost in the last three years? Citizens against the $42.5 million debt. Members of the public warn the Council of the coming recession. Former Councilmember Mike Scavuso warned the Council of mandatory Prop 218 protest vote on raising sewer rates. Signing the one and only bid. In 2007, the City Council approves, signs and starts construction based on the one and only bid. Six months later, the City then does a Prop 218 protest vote regarding raising sewer rates. This is called putting the cart before the horse. Protest vote fraud. 2008, former city clerk announced that the protest vote failed. Members of the public double-checked her count and discovered that she miscounted by hundreds. A recall is started against her, she resigns. The City was warned, in addition to being warned of the recession, they were also warned that the price tag on the WWTP upgrade and expansion was too high. The people were ignored. City loses $165,000. Colburn Electric charged with falsifying payroll and not paying overtime. City loses $165,000 in penalties because there was no working labor compliance program in place. Expansion figures questioned. Expansion is to be paid for by developers. The 11.8% expansion figure is questioned. Operations and maintenance is to be paid for by the rate payers. Ignoring the public, public perception is that Jim Barnes is in conflict of interest. The public believes their.
I'm sorry, but your time is up. Thank you. Mr. Miles?
Well, I've been gone and I hope the City doesn't raise our sewer rates, but I've got a couple of questions I'd like to ask about our system. It's my understanding that the flow meters have been taken out of all the lift stations. How can we fairly charge the service districts a correct amount if we don't know what's going through the system in the wintertime? Because it's the wintertime that creates the major problems that are new plant. Also, I find it very funny that, I go to the post office today to pick up my mail and my city can't even get any black topping from Hemmingson or Granite Construction. So I watched all the cars bounce as they went down H Street because the little road project there where they had to fix the water line, there's a little hump and I just laughed. You know, I've got better shocks on my bike than some people have on my cars. And then I have a deep concern tonight. I would hope tonight that you people will have the wisdom of Solomon. And the reason for saying that, I came home and picked up the paper at the airport as I was waiting for the cab to come and pick me up. I read the article that the paper put in there. It's pretty sad that my city is going to have a very low reserve in their general fund. So tonight, I hope you guys would consider the budget because one of the responsibilities that the electorate gives you is when they vote for you, to handle the city's finances wisely. And I have to say that the last couple of years, I haven't seen that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
Hi. My name's Barbara Ella Park, I'm county. And I'm here, I am the Secretary of Delnart County's California United Home Care Workers. We are here tonight because in, we are in negotiations with the county. We are asking you to consider these negotiations as you plan your budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Yes ma'am?
My name is Candace Tinkler, I live on Blackwell, which I believe is county, so, but moving here soon. I volunteer my time on the Delnart and Crescent City CVB and I just want to quickly say that I hope in these very trying economic times that we will still support the important functions of both the Chamber and the CVB. I volunteered my time here, I volunteered my time on the CVB in Fayetteville, West Virginia, which is where I lived before moving here. And Fayetteville is, if anything, smaller than even Crescent City. And yet, I was really surprised to come to California and realize that California, in some ways, frankly, is more backwards than West Virginia. And I'm a Californian, a native Californian, so I guess I can say that without getting kicked too hard. But in West Virginia and many, many other states, it is by law that their hotel tax and at least a portion of that supports their CVBs and their chambers. And I was really surprised that that's not a law here, but having gotten over that, I would hope it would be a common sense law. Because I am a terrible gambler. I don't gamble, I don't play the lottery, I don't, I have very little faith in anything that's not a sure thing. But I also, that's why I'm not a business person, because I know business people need to spend money to make money. And I really believe in this town, I have a history with my grandmother and my sister living here for many, many years. And I believe that at times that are hardest, we have to be the most visionary. And I don't think it's visionary to stop promoting this place and stop making it, moving forward and making it a very special place to live. It already is, but I think we need to advertise that fact. I did a little bit of research, it may not be terribly scientific to go on the web, but I do know that 87% of America's CVBs receive the majority of their funding from hotel occupancy taxes. I realize, as a person who needed their support this last year, that of course, our sheriffs and our police are very important, all those things. I would put education of our children ahead of, and protection of them ahead of anything, including CVB. But if there's any way that we can pull together and still support these important functions of making this place known, how beautiful it is and how wonderful it is to people who will visit and spend their money here, I think that'll be, every dime will be well spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Connie Morrison from the county, M-O-R-R-I-S-O-N. I'm in the phone book. Mr. Barnes, I'm upset, I hear you're retiring, leading us with a $198,000 fine. These aren't new, what did you call it? New criteria or requirements from the Quality Control Water Board. These are things that we didn't meet, our requirements that we didn't meet. So anyway, we owe a $198,000 fine thanks to Mr. Barnes. He was supposed to spend money for extending the sewer plant that was for mitigating the 19.9 acres he got, that were annexed. And instead, he got $1.5 million and $700,000 that I found so far towards building these properties back there. Mr. Black, he was the attorney for the county and I guess recently he acquired seven properties at Pacific Shores. And what I'm concerned about is when are you going to own my property? Because we go broke and you go ahead and charge people, keep raising the rates and they get their house floor closed on. And Governor Brown made a, well actually, it's a state controller, that there's a property tax, what's that word? The property tax. Yeah, what do you call it? Anyway, they put it off. You can have forgiveness for your property tax for a short amount of time. Or they also have low loans if people are in financial difficulty, but to take your tax base and reduce it. And that's the other thing I just came across. The county owns how many properties? The city owns how many properties? Tri-city agency owns 400 Front Street that has $61,000 in taxes owed to it? Don't blame this on the public.
Thank you. Other public comment? Jessie?
It just makes me so happy hearing her. I believe it was amnesty was the word you're looking for, tax amnesty.
Introduce yourself.
My name is Jesse Salisbury, I live in Crescent City. I think that we really should be investing some of this TOT money back into some kind of an advertisement. But all the advertising that I see coming out of these people is just terrible. And I really hate to say it, but you know, being that the TOT is only second to our taxes in this town for money that we get, we'd probably be broke now if we didn't keep all that money, wouldn't we? It's really sad to say. But if they could actually come up with some good ideas, you know, other than flyers that the names are down on the bottom and you can't even see them when they actually sit in those stands that everybody else does, or TV that nobody gets to see, I would be all for it. And I would still like to see fluoride put on the agenda. Years and years and years and years have gone by and it's still not put on the agenda. I would really like that to be put on the agenda as a discussion item. Thank you.
Other public comment? Yes?
My name's Janice Wilson. I am a owner of Pacific Shores Property. In the last year, I have seen my property go from almost $4,000 to pretty much $1,000, which the difference in what taxes, you profit off the taxes is, to me, extreme. From $154 to $20 something dollars.
But that's in the county.
Okay. But the point of matter is that I, as a struggling person, have a lot of friends that live in the city. And for them to, watch them have to be their sewer rates business-wise and just personally it be increased, is just, to me, extreme. I think that there's other things that people should focus on. If you want to make an impact or change on sewer and water, then let's do something about the fluoride issue to keep people healthy, healthier, and give them a better chance and opportunity to make Crescent City as beautiful and precious as it actually is. And also that the people are happier and healthier so that they pour that out and people from around the world wanting to be a part of Crescent City. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, now in closing, public comment. And we're moving on to item number five, adjourning to the Housing Authority, Crescent City Housing Authority. Could you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Director Westfall?
Yes, here.
Director Shalong?
Here.
Director Holly?
Here.
Vice Chair Enya?
Here.
And Chairwoman Murray.
Here, thank you. Is there any public comment? Again, same rules apply, three minutes, introduce yourself, ask to be, make a comment. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. Item 1, approve the regular minutes of May 21st of the Crescent City Housing Authority. And item 2, approve warrant claims for the period of May 22nd, 2012, to June 18th, 2012. Is there?
Second.
No public comment. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes ma'am. Director Holly?
Yes.
Director Shalong?
Yes.
Director Westfall?
Yes.
Vice Chair Enya?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Murray.
Yes, thank you. Since we have no other reports, we will adjourn until the next meeting, which will be slated for July 16th, 2012 at 6:00 PM. Move on to item number 6, which is the Crescent City Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency. Could you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Director Westfall, here. Director Shalong, here. Director Holly?
Here.
Vice Chair Enya?
Here.
Chairwoman Murray?
Here, thank you. Is there a public comment on the Redevelopment Successor Agency? Mr. Miles?
My name is Richard Miles. I have a concern. One of the things that I was able to watch when I was away was our state legislatures on the kind of the equivalent, California's equivalent, the C-SPAN. I'd like to know if my city has any more information about any legislation that's in Assembly or the Senate dealing with any proposals of what the state's going to do with redevelopment? Are we keeping track of all that legislation?
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on the redevelopment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. Approval of the regular minutes of May 21st, 2012.
I'll move for the minutes.
And, and item number 2, approve the warrant claims.
I'll also move for the warrant.
What are you moving?
I'm moving everything.
Second. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes.
Do you have a question?
Yes, the legal services ran over six grand, I was just wanting clarification on that.
Mr. Potso.
I can look at the specific details, but in the last couple of months, you know, we've been consulting, you know, with our outside counsel on the dissolution of the Redevelopment Agency, putting together agenda items for the Oversight Board. We also had Mr. Frazier, who's our financial consultant that is working through our attorney's office, come here for the day to address the Oversight Board and, you know, and the financials, so that was the bulk of those expenses.
Thank you.
So could you please pull the vote?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember, excuse me, Director Westfall?
Yes.
Director Shalong?
Yes.
Director Holly?
Yes.
Vice Chair Enya?
Yes.
And Chairwoman Murray.
Yes, thank you. We have no executive director's report or any other business, but we do, we have been having our successor RDA meetings and the next special one is June 27th at 1 o'clock here at the Flynn Center. And did you want to report anything from our last meeting?
Yeah, just, you know, we're trying to, it was difficult to get a whole board together and also agenda items for the last meeting and we're actually still tentatively looking at the 27th, so that hasn't been set in stone yet. We are tracking all the legislation, there's a flurry of legislation going on right now, you know, with redevelopment and trailer bills and yes, we are, you know, tracking that and trying to keep up with everything that is going on at the state.
Yes, our new representative for the Redwood Empire Division, Sarah Rounds, has been really good at emailing us all the updates and.
She has.
There is a flurry of activity and it's kind of hard to keep track of it all, so we're kind of moving along as best we can with it and appreciate the input that we're getting from the rest of our successor board members. So with that, there's no other comments or questions from the directors. I will adjourn until the next regular scheduled meeting, which is July 16th here for the City Council. And the special successor agency meeting is tentatively slated for June 27th at 1 o'clock. And we'll move on to item number 7, which is public hearings. And this is the one I imagine most people are here for. The, conduct the public hearing to adopt the final budget for the fiscal year 2012, 2013, with a continued public hearing to be held on June 2nd, 2012.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. Jean Palata, City Manager. And I'd like to, this evening, just go through the staff recommendations real briefly. And I'd like to, this evening, just go through the staff recommendations real briefly and clarify my item number two. It's a little confusing. It should just specifically state, you know, hear public comment and then, you know, get into council discussion and then continue the public hearing to the July 2nd meeting, you know, where we anticipate a final budget adoption. To this date, the City Council, we had a workshop a week and a half ago that we spent about three hours, you know, with city staff. All of the directors were there. A lot of city employees were there listening and a few members of the public. We spent three hours walking through all four funds of our budget. And we discussed them pretty in depth and the council gave me some direction to come back for some ideas of balancing specifically the general fund budget. So what I'd like to do this evening is just kind of recap that as briefly as I can for the public that are listening this evening and go through, you know, what the status is for each of those funds. And then we can get into, you know, hear the public comment and then we can get into specific details as the council would like to do. Big picture, all cities in the state of California are struggling. And we're no different. You know, revenues are down, you know, expenses and costs continue to increase. And, you know, we need to start thinking or rethinking how we do business. And it really gets back to community and what our role is in the community as a city in providing public service. And, you know, when times get tough, I think people get a lot more creative. They start thinking, you know, how we provide, you know, different services, you know, not, you know, unlike what you do, you're doing at home. You know, when budgets get tight, you know, pizza night is no longer pizza night, you know, it's, you know, you do something different. You know, the bills that we pay, we maybe cut back on a few items in our personal budgets. And that's where we're at with our city's budget. You know, we no longer can think, you know, of the norm. We can no longer think, better? No longer think on, that we're, we need to think out of the box and ask ourselves how we can do things differently and always question how we are doing things. So, you know, when we went through this budget, and this budget was a fairly long process with city staff. We had several meetings with the directors, you know, going through the line items. We changed our process a little bit and getting a lot more detail from staff on how we spend. And that's, you know, the final document before you tonight is a portion or all of that staff work, you know, to this date. So, you know, times have changed. We need to think differently. Our budgets, you know, we have four main budgets. The housing budget, water, sewer, and general fund. Housing is doing okay. You know, we brought to you a balanced budget. And we went through in our workshop, you know, the different, how the housing revenues come in, where we get them from the federal government, how they're divided up, how it's spent. And so I think that's pretty clear. And it's, you know, good that we can continue forward with the Housing Authority programs. The water enterprise fund has been in a structural deficit for several years. It's, you know, revenues basically don't, you know, aren't enough right now to cover the cost of doing services. And as I go through all these budgets, what I, you know, I'm trying to do is get out of our silos, you know, of compartmentalizing, you know, what staff does. Because overall, all the staff that are, you know, with the city all work in all of these different funds and they charge to these different funds. You know, what we're doing in water and sewer right now is what we should be doing. We're keeping up on the overall maintenance, all the repairs that are needed. And, you know, that does cost. And it does, there's a certain, you know, amount of money that we need to put, you know, towards that so we can keep our infrastructure up to date. There's certainly a lot of other capital improvements in both of those funds that we're looking at in the next five years that need to be completed as well. And I've provided that in the staff report and we talked about that in our workshop, what those, you know, five-year capital improvements are like. The bottom line, we're in a structural deficit with water. You know, we're not going to dig out of that with the adoption of this budget. I'm recommending that we do adopt a budget with a deficit. We're lucky we have a fairly healthy reserve. Over the years, we've put money away. That reserve includes about $1.2 million of available cash. And then there's another, actually, 1.3 and then 1.2 in a loan that the water fund did with the RDA, Redevelopment Agency, at the time. The estimated five-year capital improvement costs are over $4.8 million. So at this time, you know, the recommendation is to spend the reserves. Let's, you know, staff, you know, give us six months, you know, by the end of the calendar year to come back with some recommendations on how we can structurally, you know, change that. And so that's our recommendation, you know, for the water fund. The sewer enterprise fund, you know, we, you know, are very fortunate. We have a brand-new, state-of-the-art facility for sewer treatment. We continue to maintain several list stations. We continue to maintain a lot of infrastructure that goes to that plant. What's different in the budget before you this evening than what I presented to you at the workshop is we removed a capital improvement item that we had slated for this year, which is the septic receiving station. That was a $250,000 capital improvement item. It was anticipated that the expenditure of those funds would generate about $75,000 in revenue. At this time, we're still going through some hurdles with the state and getting the permit process. We're not going to stop that. We're going to continue to pursue all the permitting necessary and revisit this back in mid-year budget. But removing that from the sewer budget does, you know, provide some cost savings to the fund. There is a reserve in the fund. Adopting this budget is a $55,000 deficit. And we will continue to, you know, move forward, but again, in six months, come back to the council with some recommendations and direction. The sewer enterprise fund budget does include CPI increase, which is later on in the agenda this evening. That is approximately $100,000 of revenue. And this is an anticipated annual CPI increase that, you know, was looked at several years ago when the 218 fee, fees were set. So this is, you know, something that we would do on an annual basis. This year, it's, would increase the revenue by about $100,000. And we'll talk about that a little bit more later on in the agenda.
Jean, can you, I'm sorry, can you get that a little bit closer?
How's that? Right, right there, huh? Lot better? General fund. And actually, I do have in the staff report the Public Finance Authority. That is, you know, a budget section. That's a financing tool that the city uses. Wanted to address that in front of the council, but at this, you know, time, it is part of the budget, but there's no revenue impacts that we need to address at this time. The general fund budget, this is the, probably the more difficult budget that we've been struggling with to balance. Made some changes to the budget. And what I'd like to do is walk through that. And this gets back to the silos because, you know, some of the, you know, changes that we've made to this budget in this, you know, proposal to the City Council does impact sewer water because some of the, you know, positions are funded through sewer and water, you know, portion of those positions. So kind of across the board, you know, when we, when I say we're not hiring or we've eliminated 3.5 positions, you know, that does help in the general fund budget, but also the sewer and water budget as well. The, working through the general fund budget and taking a look at what our resources are, we need minimum $700,000 in that reserve for cash flow purposes. Our money that we receive through the different, you know, sources, you know, TOT, sales tax, property tax, come in at varied times throughout the year. In order for us to make our payroll, you know, pay our bills, you know, we need, you know, a certain amount of cash flow to make that happen. If we dip below that $700,000, we do run a risk of, you know, maybe not having enough cash flow to pay, you know, those bills. And I think that's very important as we move forward. The other policy direction that the council has set is to have a 25% reserve for your general fund. And that reserve is really for the emergencies, you know, the different things that come up throughout the year that really are not anticipated. And, you know, and I'll get through this, you know, a little bit more detail, but there are some things in here that are variables that could change as we move forward in this budget cycle that could really have an impact negatively on this budget. So I want to talk about those items a little bit as well. So the $700,000 is really the minimum that, you know, we need to take a look at. And that was our base, you know, when we looked at, you know, what recommendation, you know, to make to the City Council. And certainly if that reserve was higher, you know, as we're projecting, that would be, we would be in a lot better shape. And there'd be a lot more comfort in adopting this budget if that was higher. But given that, you know, we do have to operate. Now, our operating, what cities do? We do, you know, sewers, roads, streets, or actually, let me kind of back up. You know, general fund-wise, it's parks, it's streets, it's drainage, it's police, it's fire, it's recreation, pool, the cultural center. You know, those are all the items that are within this general fund budget. What we're recommending this year overall is to do a departmental reorg of the Public Works Department. And that's where, you know, we would be reducing, you know, three and a half positions. And we talked about that quite a bit in our workshop on the components of that. Did eliminate a finance accountant clerk, one position. Would like to create a finance, an analyst, I think you'd position into the budget. And, you know, that's really where our needs are to, you know, help in the finance department in tracking our revenues and keeping up with, you know, all the reporting requirements that we do have in that department. Public safety incentive program is in the budget. That is a cost. In the police department, we did reduce that public safety incentive is kind of included with the overtime. So we reduced, you know, overtime a little bit, added some public safety to, you know, hopefully kind of offset, you know, that, the overtime needs in the police department. But then on the fire department, we did add about $10,000 to increase some public incentives, you know, for the firefighters and our volunteers. Deferred hiring vacancies, one vacancy in the police department that we're going to defer hiring. And the analyst position for the finance, you know, if this is approved through the council, it probably won't be till October 1 before we can make that hire. So we included that in the budget numbers before you. And then we're also looking at, and we believe this the case, of renegotiating the heating propane rates for the public pool. And we're pretty confident that, you know, we can make that happen and reduce costs. So those are, you know, kind of the big items that we're reducing costs. And then also in the public works budget, we did include, you know, some of the economic development is including some wayfinding, money for wayfinding signs to help, you know, with keeping people here in our community. The, okay, we talked about the reorganization and, you know, what that means. The general fund deficit is about $115,000. Actually, you know, I need to back up. The other thing that has changed since our public workshop is the money from the RV park. You know, we've been putting about $50,000 for the past three years, I believe, you know, from the profits of the RV park into the general fund. I'm recommending not doing that. We are applying for a grant application, actually was submitted, I believe, Friday of last week in order to make improvements to the RV park. And, you know, having a cash flow for that match, which is 20% match, would be necessary to make those improvements. And, you know, that's actually kind of an easy one because we could do, you know, a loan possibly for that match and then make the improvements, you know, on that and pay back the loan, you know, from that. The RV park is, I believe, a revenue source for the city. And it's a good revenue source, you know, and I believe we can, you know, with some improvements to that RV park, we can raise the rates, charge a little bit more, make it a lot more attractive. And hopefully that would help our economic base for the community.
Mr. Palazzo, can you tell me when we'll know if we get that grant?
Pardon?
When will we know if we get that grant?
That's a good question. We submitted it. It's an EDA funding grant. Actually, it is from kind of the disaster mitigation. And actually, the tri-agency, Mr. Renfro, brought it to our attention and we contacted EDA and he gave them a list of projects and they liked the RV park project the best. And so we've been working with them to pursue that. I am anticipating within a month, you know, it sounded like they were moving fairly quickly on their decisions with that.
And the match would be?
20%.
Of?
Yeah, I believe the grant was 1.6. I think our match would be about $400,000.
And do we have that much in the RV?
Yeah, again, we would, we would have to, no, we do not. Our balance in the RV park is about $87,000, I believe. You know, if we have, at the end of the year, balance might be a little bit more. You know, what we need to do is do a loan to do our match. And some of that match is, I believe, some staff time. So we would have to come back to the council before we accepted the grant, of course, and kind of lay out a plan on how we, you know, would finance this and make it work. And then that would be for the council approval. The other, you know, a couple of unknowns that are in this budget. Actually, let me get ahead of myself here. So the general fund budget is about $115,000 in deficit. Our estimated fund balance at the end of this year is $780,000. With $115,000, you know, the deficit would dip below that $700,000 to about $664,000. So, you know, we're really in a crucial point here, you know, with our general fund budget. We do have put together some estimated capital improvement needs. Doesn't, you know, we always have needs and, you know, our wish list at times, you know, sometimes we bump things back. You know, but all together, we have about $8 million over the next five years that, you know, could potentially, you know, pop up that, you know, we need some revenue. See, fire hall retrofit, wanted to touch base on that. You know, we did apply for a grant for the seismic retrofit of the fire hall. There is a 25% match on that. At this point, I think the grant application is being submitted today or tomorrow. We're real close to getting that submitted. It looks like the match on that would probably range between 200 to 250,000. So again, that's kind of a variable in this budget because we're going to have to come back to the City Council, kind of lay out a plan. You know, how do we plan on, you know, the way to do this is to finance it. And, you know, different from the RV park. The RV park is a revenue source. We can generate revenue from that. You know, the, you know, fire station, it's not a revenue source. You know, we, you know, there's no way to generate revenue off of these improvements. So it is, you know, a payment that would need to come out of the general fund or we would have to find some revenue to make that happen. But we don't know those details and before we move forward, we will come back to the council on that. So there's a variable there. Front Street right-of-way acquisition and improvements, none of that, that's not in this budget at all at this time. The CDPG funding, as we all know, we've had some hurdles with CDPG this year on our application. It looks like our application has been accepted to the state and it's in a review process. However, that does no guarantee that we will get any funding from that. We did put in about $50,000 for this year for, you know, funding the pool services. So again, that's another variable. $50,000 is in this budget. You know, we're being optimistic, maybe, you know, getting ahead of ourselves on that one. But if that doesn't, you know, come, then we're going to have to readdress that with the council as well. But if that doesn't, you know, come, then we're going to have to readdress that with the council as well. So the recommendations that, you know, we came to in this budget, really staff has done, you know, an excellent job going through this budget. You know, parity, we're pretty equal, held the line was the budget message. Really, there's no other way to cut unless we do look at significant services to this community. And, you know, we talked about that, you know, what do we cut? We don't mow our lawns, we don't clean our restrooms, we lock up our restrooms for the tourists and the customers. You know, there's, you know, things that, you know, we just won't be able to do in order to, you know, provide those services. The other, you know, two areas that we touched upon in our workshop is the funding that we do through community promotions and also the funding that we do with our economic development to the tri-agency. So went back and took a look at that, those two items. And, you know, at this point, you know, the businesses, and we're all partnerships, it all gets back to the community. You know, the businesses really need to help us out, step up and help us with some of this funding, you know, for those community promotions. There is a trend starting, you know, throughout the state of California. A lot of cities are now, you know, unable to help, you know, with, you know, putting, you know, some TOT or some revenue towards, you know, visitors bureaus and chambers of commerce and visitor centers. And in other communities, you know, the hotels, you know, the restaurants, the other businesses are starting to step up and say, okay, we'll self-assess ourselves, you know, we'll provide some funding, you know, that goes, you know, to these services. And, you know, when they do that, the city's out of it, they have more control over that money, it's more of a guarantee. And, you know, you know, at this point, you know, we need to start looking at that and looking at, you know, towards our partners in the community. Business success is going to be our success. It's kind of a double-edged sword because if we cut the funding, you know, is that marketing, you know, going to happen? You know, are we doing the adequate marketing? Maybe we need to mix it up a little bit because if, you know, it's not working right now, and then, you know, maybe, you know, maybe some changes need to happen in order to, you know, make it work. So those are a lot of variables. And I can sit on a board and I actually did, if you walked into my office, my whiteboard, I had, you know, a lot of different percentages and variables and, you know, how do we, you know, figure this out? And really what it comes down to is, you know, everybody's experiencing some pain. You know, my recommendation is, and I've gotten some comments on this, you know, of, you know, I'm recommending the reducing the funds that we provide to the chamber by $37,000. You know, right now it's 87,000. That's, you know, divided up between fireworks, visitor bureau, visitor center. 11,000 to fireworks, I believe 40,000 to visitor bureau and 37 to the visitor center. You know, my recommendation is, you know, reduce that by 37,000, have 50,000 in the budget, you know, to the chamber and let them decide, you know, how to spend that money, you know, what's important. And, you know, how, you know, they have a board, they take a look at the marketing plans, you know, what's the most important possibly? And hopefully they can go out to the other businesses and, you know, get some support from the other businesses to help, you know, fund some of the other gaps that they may experience, you know, with the reduction of this funding. They have the ability to do that, they have the ability to go out and raise funds. The tri-agency, you know, I'm recommending a $6,000 reduction out of the 31,543 is what we've been budgeting over the last several years. Tri-agency is in a contract, it's a two-year contract, it has one more year on that contract. You know, however, we can go, in accordance with that contract, go to the tri-agency and, you know, reduce some funding, ask them to, you know, go back and kind of rethink on how that money is spent. Tri-agency does not have that ability to go out and raise revenue. You know, they're kind of a joint powers authority between the harbor, the county and the city. You know, we pay them through, you know, these three different agencies to perform a specific function. So that was my reasoning behind, you know, these, these recommendations. Kind of all said, if we move in that direction, you know, we still have a deficit in the general fund of about $72,000. It does keep us above that $700,000. Lot of variables, kind of, you know, need to, you know, watch this every three months, you know, mid-year. You know, I need to, you know, keep the council informed on where we're at and, you know, how the revenue is coming in, but also, you know, how these other things that are unknowns, you know, you know, what the status is on those. So, you know, with all that said, I think the next steps is to, you know, take public comment and then take questions, you know, specifically from the city council on.
So I agree, I think we should get public comment and then allow the council to ask technical questions. And I, for one, appreciate all the work that you've put in and I know Ken and all the department heads. I talked to Ken and Gene today about a question on where the TOT money was in the, in our binders for our budget. And Ken knew right immediately, it was on page 22. So you guys know this by heart and you've been working on it very hard, so greatly appreciate it.
And I'd like to thank staff, you know, all staff.
The staff, right, all the departments.
Ken specifically, you know, and I've been working real closely together on all this. And, but all staff have participated in this. And, you know, it, you know, without, you know, hiring, you know, some of these positions, keeping positions vacated, you know, staff works hard and, you know, they're taking on a lot more responsibility. You know, I think they're up for the challenge, you know, and it's a good challenge. And it's all about, you know, a lot of passion, you know, for this community. And that's one of the, you know, things that I have seen as a city manager here for, you know, seven, nine months now? Nine months, I believe? You know, there's a lot of passion, you know, with the staff in providing good quality service to this community. It's just that balance, you know, where do we balance that? And, you know, we want to make things shine for our customers and the residents, you know, that are here. So tourists and residents alike, so, you know, that's who we see as our customers and they do a good job.
They do, and everyone does, thank you.
Thank you.
So if the council doesn't object, I'll open this up for public comment. And then that way we may have more questions that we might want to have answered after we have public comment. So I'll acknowledge Mr. Dillard first, since you're already there.
The only thing I question is, if you're going to do public comment, are you going to do it twice? Because if you're going to do public comment here, then you're going to have discussion for closure, then we don't have any rebuttal, okay? So what I would suggest is you go ahead and have your discussion and answer your questions and then do public comment all at once. Because I don't, I don't like to be shut out. We get to make a comment and then you get to make a closure on it, that's not right.
That's Rosenberg's rules of order. So, Mr., I'm going to allow Mary Foot, since you've had a couple of opportunities already, Mr. Miles.
Good evening, city council members. I'm Mary Foot, the current president of the Board of Directors for the Crescent City Del Norte Chamber of Commerce. We recognize that the city is undergoing very significant shortages in your budget this year. And in turn have had to make some very hard decisions about how to balance your budget. Tonight I would like to respond to the cutbacks suggested in the support the chamber currently receives from the city. With a proposed $37,000 cut, we know we cannot keep existing programs running. That would include the visitor's bureau, the visitor's center and providing a July 4th firework display. The Board of Directors for the chamber would like to suggest that we could handle a more modest cut in the current amount the city gives to the chamber. With a cut of 10%, we feel that we could still offer the services that are expected from the chamber. Our visitor's bureau would continue with the commitment to bring in the next new visitor to Del Norte County. The visitor's center would continue to keep their doors open and provide services to the new visitors who come through our city every day. We would also be able to continue to offer fireworks on July 4th, a little smaller show, but a tradition that fills the city's hotels during the July 4th holiday. We would still be able to bring in new members to the chamber and offer viable services to them. And across-the-board cut of 10% would make us leaner, but still able to provide the services mentioned. Should we experience deeper cuts, it would require more aggressive measures and could mean closure of the visitor's center and no longer providing a July 4th fireworks display. We appreciate your support and want to be able to offer the best services and support possible for our chamber businesses and this community while continuing to develop tourism for our area. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Miles?
Well, here's my chance to maybe be a little biblical discussion tonight about not killing the baby because you can't play the role of Solomon. What do you do? Do you have two policemen at Denny's at 3 o'clock that are so tired they can't see straight? And they may make the wrong judgment call because we don't have enough police officers on our street? Like having a sergeant on duty when you have the other two officers? Or do you fund the Chamber of Commerce and the Tourist Bureau? And most, I call the chamber the day because the chamber is important in this community. I think we should fund some of the needs of the chamber. Not all their needs because it's a private nonprofit that is membership-driven. And if they can't have a campaign to increase their membership, why should the city backfill their needs? I don't think you can fund both the tourist bureau and the visitor's bureau. I think you should fund the chamber. It disappoints me today when I went and got my mail that I don't see that famous ad in the Sunset magazine every other month. I think the city needs to remember the words of Dennis Burns. We need to base our funding to the chamber by how they either increase the TOT revenues in this city and then if they do increase it, we give them more money each year. But at the same time, what really worries me is our city reserves. I became aware of the day that we're not going to be able to fix our water system this year. That's the takeover on Amador that's rusting. We need to send a diver into the one on Washington. And the one at Wonderstop is falling apart according to some discussions I've had with some of your city workers.
Time's up, Mr. Miles, thank you. Is there other public comment? Mr. Renfro?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Bill Renfro, I'm the executive director for the Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority. We appreciate and share the pain that the city is going through right now. It's not just our problem, as you well know, it's a state problem, it's a national problem, it's a global problem. The Tri-Agency, as you are well aware, is a joint powers authority. Most recently, the agreement that the city signed was in 1974 establishing the Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority. As a joint powers authority, as Mr. Palazzo pointed out, we are quasi-public entity. We have no taxing authority, we have, we have no way of generating funds other than through the contributions of the three entities that form the Tri-Agency. So we cannot hold events or generate funds other than what is contributed from the three members. We are currently looking at the potential for expanding the Tri-Agency. I don't know if it'd be the Quad Agency or the Pint Agency or whatever, but to try to bring additional members in to help share some of the costs. Currently, the city is, again, Mr. Palazzo pointed out, in the third year of a three-year agreement that they signed to fund the Tri-Agency or at least the executive director position of that agency. However, the Tri-Agency can also and will do whatever, will work within the scope and the budget that we're given. Two of the council members are also my board members and so they will take this information back to my board and we can certainly work with the scope that I've got. The city is lucky to have reserves. As you probably know, many communities have already depleted their reserves in the last few years because of this extended economic recession that we're going through. No one quite understood it was going to last this long. So I'd like to leave the comments here this evening with some upbeat economic information. First of all, my informal discussion with many of the merchants and the tourist attractions in the community indicate that tourism is up substantially this year, which is good for everybody. It's not only up, it started earlier this year. We also will probably have someone in Bistro Gardens here in the next, what used to be Bistro Gardens, within the next 30 days, as well as we will probably have a new restaurant in the Beacon Burger. So things are improving, it just takes time. Thank you.
Is there other public comment?
Well, I don't know.
Can you restate your name for the?
My name's Jonas Wilson. It's a kind of rough tiger. My high interest is the hydrofluoric solistic acid in the water. I really wish that that wouldn't be a sleeping tiger in so many people's minds because it has a great impact, a great giant impact in the economics of this country and in the health and well-being that's been contributed to such extreme financial difficulty. Because it has a medical impact also. This toxic waste is an extreme burden and burden on this country's life, livelihood and the reality of the constitution of all of us being a part of our communities. I understand that it's at least $30,000, which is so extremely small comparison to the economics of this little city and community. But the reality of it is, it needs to be addressed, it needs to be faced, it needs to be coped with, it needs to be dealt with and not necessarily on the shoulders of a mentally ill woman. I plead my case with this matter because until we step up and step forward and give this country the example setting and really prophetically state that we in fact do care not only about its own citizens, but about the constitution of our life and well-being of all of our citizens. And the $30,000 it could go to, there's much of a list that I wrote down as an example setter. It was maybe just by extreme, the front street improvements, $30,000 can go to a nice impact there. And all the, all of the example setting and saving and rescuing people's health and well-being and giving them the best opportunity not to be sick and going in and out of hospital, emergency and urgent care centers. So that's, that's pretty much, I don't know how else to state it to you, it needs to be taken serious. We need to stop sleeping and taking it for granted. Hydrofluoric solistic acid needs to be removed out of our city's waters. As an example of this country, we need to step forward. Napa Valley, Mike Thompson's little community, he, they took it. Napa Valley, Mike Thompson's little community, they took it out for the grapes sake, for grapes, so people might enjoy clean, clear wine. So I think we could at least step up and be acknowledging and intelligent beings that we are.
Your time's up.
And deal with this hydrofluoric solistic acid, which is toxic, ways for sick to us.
If there's other public comment that has to do with fluoride, I will not allow it. We have tabled that issue and it is a matter of the voters. It's not a matter of the city councils for their decision. So if you want to talk about fluoride, I'm going to just ask you to sit back down. Just giving you a warning.
Joseph Alouli, I live in the city. Good evening, council members. Thank you for serving and allowing me to speak. I just wanted to say I hope we can avoid laying off any city employees. I think we're pretty much down to bare minimum what we're doing. And if I can recommend, if we could any way raise the TOT, I think that could help matters. I know it's a tough issue and there's a lot to look at, but I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Other public comment?
I miss you guys. It's been so long since I last stood before this council. But I'm here tonight on behalf of the Visitors Bureau. I know there's a lot of decisions facing the council tonight that are difficult, but I don't want to see us take a step back to where we were in 2006, standing before this council, asking for transient occupancy tax to help fund the Visitors Bureau. We took great strides and great steps, which many of you supported. Councilmember Aneah, in particular, who made that deciding vote in 2006 to help fund this proposition. It's worked very well. And I know these are tough times on your general fund. But again, the transient occupancy tax makes up probably the largest portion of the general fund revenue coming into the city. And I've heard comments here tonight that suggest that the Visitors Bureau basically hasn't been working. And I'd beg to differ on that fact. And more importantly, it's been something I've observed, but you don't need to listen to me. You don't need to listen to people at the city in this case. Look to an outside observer. Look to Dean Runyon, who we track, who tracks us, the county, and the progress of TOT and those TOT revenues flowing into us. And I think your city financial official, Mr. McDonald, could help prove this or at least research this and bring it back before you. But we have seen TOT revenue since 2001 grow at a rate of 9.4% to date 2011 within Delnor County. That's a substantial amount of growth. I wish I could have my Edward Jones advisor do the same thing for my tax portfolio, my stock portfolio, but it just doesn't do that. But we are realizing substantial gains in TOT revenue. And I would hate to see us back off anything that's helping to maintain that specific growth of that rate of 9.4%. We know we're getting outcompeted around us. Humboldt County in particular is growing at a rate of 9.6%. Their TOT revenue has grown from a measly $2.9 million to about $4.9 million in that same 10-year period. But we're keeping pace and I don't think we could keep pace if we cut back. And we're trying to help you. And I want to continue to be able to help you bring new revenue into this community so we could continue to support. Those services are very vital to the city, specifically fire and our police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment? Seeing no other public comment, I will close. Public comment and bring it back to the council for technical questions or questions for staff, comments?
I have a few. On page two, paragraph that starts with the deficits in the water and sewer funds are attributed to the current rate structures. I don't think that that's the only reason why we're in a deficit situation. If we're going to increase the water rates, then we have to do a Prop 218 protest vote. In the sewer fund, a minor course correction to the rate structures is necessary to continue to meet state requirements and maintain a quality facility. We have spent $660,000 to spruce up the power plant for the grand opening that was in addition to the $43.8 million loan, not a part of. We were told the lab itself, $2.5 million lab, would become a profit center and pay for itself in two and a half years. It hasn't done that. We have increased the legal rate for our assistant attorney. We could go and investigate, going to a private company or a special district. So, and then as Jenny pointed out, there have been some figures on the lift station that I have questions about. Turning to page four. The deficit for the sewer fund has been reduced since the budget workshop. Okay, so we're removing the 250,000 septic receiving station. I think that's a good move right now. At the bottom of number four, renegotiated propane rate at the public pool. I don't see where the propane rate is in any of the financials. How much are we going to be saving? While you're discussing that, the Chamber of Commerce, I always felt like the Chamber was in the wrong location. I'd like to see it in a different location. The cultural center is a black hole for us. Turning to page 10 of 64, the city clerk. I had no idea that our city clerk was making $57,000, $58,000. And I'd like to know what the contract and ser- yeah.
That's what the budget is for the department. That doesn't mean she makes that.
Okay. All right. So under total sources, I mean, operating uses, contracts and services, what comprises $22,660?
Elections?
Yeah, that's one thing. What else? What is this imaging muni code? What is that?
Member Argina? Get to my detail page here. The wages and benefits for the city clerk's position, wages is about $24,000, benefits is about $7,000, to clarify that. The contracts and services in this year's budget, that actually went up a little bit due to elections for this year. Out of the city clerk's office too, they do a lot of the imaging. It's the record-keeping for all these meetings. And also there's some contract services in there for SB 90 funds that the clerk manages to submit that paperwork to the state in hopeful of getting money back with our processes that we do with these public meetings. So that's all included in that fund.
Okay, thank you for that. On the city attorney, I see his contract has employee support $6,000. What is that $6,000 cover?
Can I just say that we just had a workshop to go over all this detail and tonight should be about how we are going to proceed with the staff recommendations and/or if the council has any other cost-saving ideas?
I appreciate that, but I do have these questions that I expect answers. So I'd like to know, what is the $6,000 for employee support?
There's other outside contracts that go through the city attorney's office that that covers. The employee support is training.
I might add to that. Part of it is the subscription to the Legal Database Research Service, Lexis. Part of it is books and part of it is the attendance at the statewide city attorney's conference, which is twice a year.
Is that something that a city normally would pay for when the city attorney is a contract employee? Or is that something that other cities have their contract employee pay for?
That's pretty normal.
All right. On page 15 of 64, building inspection code enforcement under contracts and services, we see almost $67,000, including animal control. And in '09-'10, it was $36,500. Why the huge jump?
I can answer that. We used to do our own building inspection and now we pay the county to do it. We have an MOU with the county, so that budget has increased.
That's because we no longer have a building inspector.
That is accurate.
Or a plan checker.
Okay. On page 20, cultural center rent, capital leases and rentals. Has it really been a steady $18,000 year in and year out?
That is correct. It's been around that, $16,000 to $18,000 in revenue.
And has anyone discussed reducing the rates so that more people might rent the place? Or we might get a little more volume? Has that been discussed?
I appreciate what Councilmember Shalong said and we have had that discussion previously in budget workshop meetings.
Well, I don't remember. I'm sorry. And I'd like to have this answered.
As I recall, Councilmember Westphal, the council raised those rates about two years ago to keep up with, to get, you know, to keep up with the costs of the cultural center. As it turns out, we were trying to help with the cost, the monthly cost of the cultural center. But as it turns out, the fairgrounds raised their rates. They're the same as ours and neither one are doing well. People just aren't renting it anymore. Same with the fairgrounds. They charge exactly the same. So that's the reason that we raised it, is to cover our costs.
Page 21, on this community pool, we have a $460,000 operating budget between wages, salaries, utilities and telephone. Did we ever get that figure on what the propane would go down on?
It'll be approximately $40,000 in savings.
Like a drop in the bucket, huh?
Once we renegotiate, you know, the contract with that service.
On page 22, secured taxes, AB 1290 payments. What is that?
Those are the redevelopment pass-through payments to the city. Whereas we're a taxing entity and so there'll be monies passed through to the city.
And I'm sure you told me this before, but would you explain property taxes in lieu, $546,000?
I'll ask Mr. McDonald to address that.
You were talking the $546,000?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the vehicle license fee. To try and explain that, is the state did something, I think about five years ago, they called the triple flip, where they took property tax money and replaced it with something else. Because there used to be, say 20 years ago, you paid property tax on your vehicle as personal property and that money was then forwarded to the city. They've somehow juggled that thing around. It's not as clear and straightforward as it used to be, but that's really where it comes through. It's not directly coming from the personal property taxes, so that's why it's now become an in lieu tax of the personal property. But it's because of the state juggling money around.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So on page 36, on the sewer fund summary, all cost centers. Does that include the testing laboratory, the wastewater treatment plant, sewer operations, sewer lift stations? Okay, so Jim Barnes was talking about retiring in December. Has there been any questions about what would happen if he retired now? Would that, how much would that save the city?
I don't think that, well, that's not in the budget. I mean, we have funded that position for half a year in the budget.
Okay. Can you explain in detail on the testing laboratory, inter-fund services provided, $280,000 services to water sewer utility?
Again, Mr. McDonald, we'll answer that.
Yeah, and the presentation on this has changed from previous years. But what we've tried, or what I've done is the charges up on the top section are what's actually paid to us in cash from external parties. And the amounts that are down below would be what would be charged if the treatment plant was an outside party. So that's why it's an internal service provided. So a portion, I think it's about 210 of the 280 is attributable to the sewer system and the sewer treatment plant. And then there's about $70,000 in tests that our lab does that goes to benefit the water system.
What kind of tests does the lab do?
In regards to water systems, they're going to do all kinds of bacterial tests and regulatory tests. Our lab is a certified lab, so they can do almost, it's pretty close to 98% of all the testing required. There's a couple tests that they have to send outside that they can't do. But generally, it's the required tests. And then they do also do some operational testing that they'll do, you know, do for adjusting chemical injection flows and different things like that. But now you're starting to get out of the finance realm and into the engineering realm.
So under operating sources, charges for services, $35,000. What exactly is that?
That's going to be charges that are, we generate monthly to like Pelican Bay, some of the trailer parks that are required because they have a separate water system. They're required by the state to have their water supply tested. And so they'll have those tests brought into us. And we've been looking at ways to expand that external testing for like county well holders that can come in. Right now, that only option is available if they drop the sample off at the county itself. It's only about $30 a test, so there's not a great revenue source. But we don't have the means of doing those tests and handling the cash payments. So usually we just do bigger customers.
Well, what happened that in 2009, 2010, it was $93,500 and we're down to $35,000?
Without analyzing it in detail, my guess is I think that was the first year the treatment plant was operational. So I think we would have had a lot more testing done from outside parties. Right now, it's down to where it's pretty much a stable amount going month to month.
Okay, on the sewer operations, page 40. On capital grants contributions, I see in 2009, 2010, there was $38,700 in connection charges. But in 1112, it says $600,000 and for 1213, $580,000. Where was the $600,000 from?
The majority of that was the Walmart and I think the hotel that's just been built. There's a couple of large apartment complexes that have come to us and that's why the number is high this year again. We anticipated about 60 connections, which is probably, I think last year we budgeted about 62, 63, something like that. And we actually exceeded, the current year budget's $600,000. I think we're currently at $790,000. So we had a lot more connections than we had anticipated.
Okay. Getting on to the sewer lift stations. I heard Jenny mention that the cost in '06 was about $30,000 and now we're up to $106,000. And I'd like to know why the difference. to know why the difference.
I don't know about that other information that was reported. What I have here is, the lift stations were not in a separate department in the past, so I've managed to break those out. Most of the expenses were separated out, so as you can see in nine-ten, we generated, we actually billed the CS, the CSDs, I think for the lift stations, a hundred and two thousand, and we had spent about a hundred and twenty-five overall. And some of, some of this is not all CSDs. There's, I can't remember the number, but there's a number of city lift stations, and then there's a number of lift stations that are owned by the CSD, and then I think there's a couple that are owned by, jointly by both.
I think that answers my questions for the moment. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there questions from council members?
Just some comments. I made great notes, now I can't find them.
As long as you can read them when you do find them.
No, I can't, actually. I just write them down so I can remember them. Obviously, this is a, is a difficult budget to contemplate. I appreciate the city's efforts, especially the loss of, of the employees that the city has lost, or the positions that the city has, has lost, and the interest in doing that through attrition and not actually impacting other people's lives, and I appreciate the sensitivity to all of that. In looking at the, at the reserve situation, I am also concerned that we go, that we not go below a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar reserve. Based upon Mr. Palazzo's comments, the reserve should actually be more like one-point-one million, from what I can tell. That's, that's what's my figuring. So we're, you know, we're almost half of where we really need to be. And I imagine cash flow, I don't want to get in a situation where we're having to float loans in order to make payroll. And so that's, that's the situation that we're approaching now, it sounds like, and that we need to be cognizant of that. Really, the choices we have, I think, are to, are to, this is, sounds elementary, but it's either to raise revenues or reduce expenditures. Those are the only two real choices we have before us. And the raising of revenues, I think we've tried to do what we can. I know that that's a concern we have with the chamber and, and the interest in keeping the TOT up. We want to raise those revenues, but we've already reduced a lot of the expenditures, and, and we're kind of running out of places to reduce. There's, there's, I, I've dealt with budgets in other environments, and, and basically the common explanation is that we have already picked the low-hanging fruit. You know, we have, we, the easy things that have been cut have probably already been cut over time, and now, now it's getting very difficult. The one thing that we didn't really take a look at, and, and hopefully I don't create a lot of enemies with this, but the pool is a deficit of about two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars a year, and the pool neither raises revenues or expenditures are being reduced. And I didn't know if a minor cutback in the hours of pool operation or something like that would be of assistance.
I can address some of that, Madam Mayor. And we looked at the pool when we were doing this budget, and two employees at the pool are actually sitting in the audience this evening. Yeah, the expenditure of general fund revenues, TOT, sales tax, property tax, it kind of goes back to what services do you want to provide the community? You know, how many police do you want on the street? You know, we need a new fire engine, are we going to purchase that? Are we going to provide, provide a recreation amenity, you know, to the community? And our main recreation amenity is the pool. And we also provide, you know, amenities in beachfront park, a lot of it is just maintenance and upkeep and keeping restrooms clean. The pool's operation, and we're trying to address, you know, what are our expenses? And the propane and heating the pool and all that, you know, those are some of our big expenses. It kind of costs the same whether or not the pool's open or if it's closed. You know, people are either in there swimming, generating revenue hopefully, or you close it, but it still costs us the same amount to heat that pool. There are some staff savings if you don't have the pool in operation. We did a, an analysis, you can, what would it cost if we closed the pool for two hours in the evening, seven to nine, we're open until nine o'clock, nine PM, I believe. So what if we closed it, you know, just two hours? You have open swim, you have different programs, you're going to lose some revenue because of those programs, but people may shift and just attend the pool in other locations. Over a course of a year, probably save about ten thousand dollars with that type of closure. So you start looking at, you know, those numbers and, you know, how do you, you still need the staffing? You know, it's a service decision. Is that, you know, do we close it for two hours to save ten thousand? It might be a little bit more, but, you know, it, it's in that ballpark.
Thank you.
Accurate with that? We're close?
I, I'm not in favor of that, then. I didn't know how much savings might be.
We looked at all those variables, and, and it is, you know, and, you know, right now, what we're trying to do, and it's not going to, you know, happen overnight, but we're trying to look at some different programs, you know, and they're small revenue sources, but it's getting people to the community, spending some more time in beachfront park. You know, we're providing rentals now, you know, charge a minor fee for those, but, you know, it's, it's not going to, it's not going to balance our budget, but if we can kind of create more of the awareness, you know, it's our own marketing of our public facility, you know, just where others, you know, market the community, we need to market, you know, what we have to offer.
Okay. And since you're standing up there, I have another question about business improvement districts.
Okay.
And it's a real interesting concept, I think, as an alternative maybe, so that we can raise funds and the business community can maybe have more control over, over how those funds are expended. The information I was sent recently talked about NAPA and talked about how it was a percentage increase in the, in the TOT at NAPA, and I thought that that's what it said, and that's how the funds were raised, but there was a subsequent information that seemed to indicate that it was actually a part of a property tax. Can you, can you answer that for me?
I can. It's a self-assessment. Actually, I'm not quite sure. NAPA may have done, there's two different forms. There's like a business improvement district, which is a self-assessment on the businesses, and that's what we have down in our downtown district. Then there's a property-based improvement district where it's assessed on the property owners, and I believe that requires a vote of the property owners. Mr. Black could probably answer that question. It may be a protest hearing with the property owners. I'd have to look up the law.
Assessments are, do require a vote of those who are assessed or proposed to be assessed. Generally, it's a mail-in ballot. It does require an affirmative majority. It's not a protest-type vote.
Okay. We have to look at the law for those specifics, you know, but there's a couple different forms, but it is a self-assessment where the owners get together and they say, hey, we want to provide certain marketing. That's where business improvement districts are formed. It's to provide money from the businesses to go into direct marketing, public improvements, you know, some districts, you know, have, you know, people on the street that just clean. I mean, there's ways, ways to do that. What I've seen in other communities is that, you know, the hotels get together, they charge a buck a night, you know, when they, you know, rent a room, and they collect that, you know, when they, you know, make their, you know, when they book, you know, the room night, and then that dollar goes into a fund that funds a visitors bureau or visitor center and provides that overall marketing. So it gets the community and the businesses, you know, more involved, and there's a lot of different forms that you, you could do that. You could, you know, work with the restaurants, with the other merchants, the, the large grocery stores in the area, and just do a, a small self-assessment. Everybody pulls, you know, a few dollars together, and before you know it, it's adequate to where you can, you know, provide this type of service or provide the marketing that you're looking for.
And that money has nothing to do with the city, so it couldn't be used for our general fund?
Correct.
Right.
Could, does not, it, it's like the business improvement district, you know, we help collect those monies, but then we pass it back to the district for their use.
You know, I, I will say, as we go forward, and, and I know we're not making, taking any action tonight, but irregardless of how this goes this, this year, I think that's something worth exploring further. I really do. I was, during our budget workshop, I felt like kind of a voice in the wilderness when I was thinking we should just raise the TOT. It just seemed to me, somebody else is paying the tax and it helps our city, and I know there's great opposition to that, and so I'm rethinking it, but maybe this is an alternative to get the kind of exposure that we need from an advertising standpoint.
You know, it, it is more difficult, you know, because you have, what do we say, twenty-three motels in, in town with, actually, sixteen motels and then seventeen motels, and then we have a bunch of vacation rentals and bed breakfasts and all that. It would require everybody to work together and get together and, and make that happen. It's real easy to go to government and say, hey, hand us some money to go make that happen. You know, that's kind of, you know, the honest, you know, being blunt here, you know, it's easy to come to one end and ask for the money. You know, you know, we are a community, and we need to work together to, to make those changes, you know, because the money's just not there right now, and, and hopefully it comes back. It's going to take a while. You know, this recession, you know, is deeper than anybody has ever, you know, thought it would be, and it's going to be several years before we move forward. And what you pointed out earlier is that this reserve, you know, should be twice as much, because we don't know what's, you know, coming at us, and we're getting to the point, you know, we're, we're still going backwards, we're still in a deficit, we're not adding to that reserve. And we still have a lot of capital projects that we're responsible for to make happen in this community, and, you know, those are going to be, you know, tougher decisions down the road if things don't change.
Okay, and I just have one final comment. The, as, as we look at the timing of these discussions, I'm thinking about tri-agency, for example. I, I'm one of the city council people that sit on the tri-agency board, and we were considering the budget way before now, so it'd be kind of good to get started earlier, maybe in thirteen, fourteen, so that we can give, give the other committees and boards that might be impacted a little heads up.
I agree.
Okay.
Other comments from council members?
I have a few. You can be guaranteed that none of us take this lightly. This is my second term in sitting on this board, and I have to say, this is the leanest budget that I've ever seen. I, it's difficult to wear several hats when you know how cutting funds is going to impact other agencies. I think that personally, cutting forty percent of the chamber's budget with not much notice at all is, could be just unrecoverable for them. And while I think that everyone needs to share in the cuts that we're taking, doing that much at once just is not going to serve our city well. Once those visitors are here, we need to take care of them. And while I, while I will support a smaller cut, I think that forty percent of, of one budget right up front is, could be irresponsible of us, especially when a very large piece of our budget comes from the transient, transient occupancy tax that is generated by the chamber's involvement in marketing. I also know that since the city has agreed to be involved in the film commission, that the chamber has taken on a very large role that's, takes a lot more of their time, and that's just something I, I just became aware of, and so might be something we want to consider communicating with the chamber about.
They don't get any compensation for that either?
No, none. So I understand that the chamber's handling all of the permits and everything, all of the liaison activities for that, so we might want to take a look at that MOU. I wanted to say that I think each year, we look at our legal services, and Bob and Martha are there, are worth their weight in gold, I can tell you that much. But I'd like to maybe, maybe look at that budget, you know, maybe we can cut even just a small amount there. The incentives in the fire department, I had just one question. We give twenty thousand dollars to the firefighters association, and in the budget, there's an additional twenty-five thousand. Is that, am I correct in reading that? So you want it, the budget is for a total of forty-five thousand?
That is correct.
Okay. So even if we just cut back maybe five thousand there, dispatch, eighty-eight thousand, have we, I know that we're researching that, but I think that we can possibly, we're looking at possibly saving some money there. And then I had one question on LAFCO, and how is that budget determined? I know it's a, it's a committee that's mandated by the state for the city to be involved with and for us to fund, but how do we determine how much we fund them for?
And that budget goes to the LAFCO board, which I believe two members of the council sit on that board.
Right.
That review that budget. So maybe you can answer, you know, it is a mandated.
I'm just wondering, does LAFCO create the budget that we give them?
Yes.
Okay.
They created it and provided that to the board.
Because I, why, I just got appointed to LAFCO, so I'm, I'm on that board now, and I know that they wanted to raise the budget for the city, and we trimmed the budget down so that they didn't have to raise it, so I was just curious if they actually created our budget.
And I, you know, maybe Mr. Black can answer, add to that.
The answer is yes. LAFCO is an independent commission. It is mandated by the state of California. They create their budget, and the city is required to fund fifty percent of it. So you have forty percent of the vote on LAFCO, and between you and the county representatives, you have eighty percent of the vote. So you can control the budget at that level, but not at this level.
Okay.
At this level, you're mandated to pay half.
And I, I was on LAFCO, and I know that the executive director, George Williamson, has tried to keep his expenses for his, his own contract down, so they, they've been conscientious of our, our budget, our city budget as well.
We could, I'm also sit on the LAFCO board, and we can certainly go back and take another look at that, I think. We've, we've approved the budget, I think, for.
We have.
For twelve thirteen, but, you know, in light of, of what we're struggling with, it's something maybe to be revisited, and we can bring that up.
I, you know, I think that if we, if we do cut some funding from the chamber, a smaller amount, and revisit, you know, as we go, but I think allowing them a year to plan ahead, because like you said, I don't think this recession is going away anytime in the very near future, you know, that would be more responsible of us, I think, than to cut their budget by forty percent. I think that's about it for me.
Mayor Pro Tim?
I have a few comments also. You know, I'm not going to use the word irresponsible of, if we cut any money from the chamber, because last year, we said we'd give it a year for the visitors bureau, that's forty thousand dollars. The city's proposing cutting thirty-seven thousand dollars from the chamber's overall budget. So the visitors bureau, which I sit on the board of the visitors bureau, by the way, if that went away, that's forty thousand dollars. City manager is recommending thirty-seven thousand. As far as fireworks go, I'd hate to see the fireworks go, but I'm sure they can find another sponsor, they just found another one, and if it only has twenty-two thousand dollars, we have a show anyway. But I'm sure another business will step in to, to fund the fireworks, so that really doesn't concern me. What concerns me is about the residents of Crescent City, and the budget that we have to maintain has a council. And we're right. And we're right at the margin of barely keeping above water with the seven hundred thousand dollars in our reserves. And sometimes, we have to do, make difficult decisions. And, but we have to consider all the residents of our city in keeping them safe, keeping them secure, and keeping our city going to provide all the services that we can. Some are extra services that are nice to have if we can afford it. But the community has to step forward too, and help support the city, because they're the ones getting the people visiting here and filling up our hotels and filling up our restaurants, and they need to contribute too. It's not just the city's responsibility to do that. It's our, it's our responsibility to help, and we do that. But when, when cities are really suffering like we are, we need to make some difficult decisions. Thank you.
This is a difficult time for us, and painful for staff, painful for the community, and painful for the community support providers that we have. Mr. Renfro mentioned creating a bigger tri-agency. What I think might be a better solution, after working with the Community Development Financial Institution, is that you merge with the Delmar Economic Development Corporation. They're a CDFI, and they have the capacity to apply for grant funding. And if you worked in conjunction with them, and they were doing the funding for tri-agency, I think that that would cut out a big part of our expenses, generate more revenue for the community by getting the grants from, through the U.S. Department of Treasury, and bring in a more viable business community perhaps as well, because it is community development financial institutions that do that. And there is grant money out there from the government. We, we don't generate any income from the tri-agency, unfortunately. We have those loans that are out there that are costing us big time, because they, they're extremely difficult to manage. So that's what I would like us to look into, is to, to have the tri-agency be folded into the Delmar Economic Development Corporation, and that would eliminate that share of a budget that would, that would help with the other community support services that we have. That's my main suggestion. And I know that's a big surprise, but I've been thinking about it a lot. And after working for a CDFI, I know that that might be a better way that you could generate the grant money that you need to bring in the businesses bill. So that's just a concept that has occurred to me in the recent mauling over of this budget, which is very painful for everyone. So that's my, that's my input. And I do not want to see as big of a cut to the Visitors Bureau or the Visitors Chamber without much warning. And I do believe that they are, do bring in a lot of money for us through TOT and sales tax.
Madam Mayor, I had two more observations. One, on the Chamber of Commerce, you collect membership dues. Can you tell me how many members you have and what kind of dues you collected in the last year?
Gina, can you come up and answer that? Gina does a quarterly report for us, and I know she gives us that answer on a quarterly basis, but we'll have you, bring you up again.
She is trying to get out of getting up here tonight. It won't work out for me. We have about three hundred and forty-eight members, and brings in about fifty-two thousand dollars in revenue.
Okay, so the obvious question is, can you use those revenues for sustaining the chamber for this coming year?
Well, use them to sustain the chamber, are you talking about just the chamber, or are you talking about the visitor center? Because the visitor center, that's the funding we get from the city and the county, actually goes to man-staff and operate the visitor center.
Well, how do you use that fifty-two thousand right now?
Well, we try to put it back into the chamber, a lot of operating expenses that we have. We have salaries, that's myself and Sharon. Sharon is full-time administrative assistant, then you have myself, which is full-time chamber executive director. I'm also the physician recruitment and retention specialist, so that's also part of my job. So a lot of that goes into there. And then we do a lot of trainings for our members. We did a really big Facebook training. A lot of businesses here weren't on Facebook, so we did a training for fifty members, so they could start promoting themselves in a free environment such as Facebook. So anything to support businesses like that, that we can educate them and support them, we do. Put it back into the businesses.
And the website.
And the website's really huge. We have, just on our Facebook page, I'm trying to keep up with chamber members, we have a following of about twelve hundred people that we reach every week. So that's pretty huge.
Excuse me, can, what page is the chamber information on?
Gina, you also produce the map?
Uh huh. The map goes out, and that goes out pretty much to every business, every hotel, every restaurant. Goes into our visitor packets, goes into our relocation packets. The visitor center, we saw over eighteen thousand people come through the doors. And last year, you probably remember from my last report, we mailed over five thousand visitor packets out, which are all warm leads.
Madam Mayor, maybe I can request, maybe Ms. Atola can discuss the differences between the visitor center and the chamber, just kind of update everybody on that.
Sure, for the millionth time.
Well, she does her reporting, it's on the visitor center and the numbers that you see, and there's, you know, a clear separation. And then page nine? Page nine, the funding that we contribute to the visitor center and the visitor bureau into the fireworks is under community promotions.
So the difference between the visitor bureau and the visitor center. The visitor bureau actually markets outside of our area, Delmar County and Crescent City, to that next new visitor. That's what they do, that's their role. The visitor center actually helps that guest when they get here. So when they come and they walk through the doors, they need to know where to eat, where to go, what to say, or what to see. And of course, our goal is to also to get them to stay another night, which helps to increase the TOT for all of us, and increase business for our businesses. So that's the main difference. The VB markets outside of our area. Once they're here, it's our role to take care of them and send them out into the different places, Stout Grove, have lunch, stay the night, stuff like that, shop downtown.
And then the Chamber of Commerce is there to support our local businesses?
Exactly, to support local businesses, help them grow, sort of be that liaison at times, and to provide even workshops, such as we've been doing this last year, which has been really popular, luncheons, which I know you've attended, trying to support those businesses and give them some of the knowledge and maybe some of the education that they haven't been able to tap into, or a class they haven't been able to go out of town to do. We try to bring that to them here. You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Gina.
You're welcome.
The other observation I wanted to make is that I think that our city is neglecting to look at our real resource, which is our people. If we look at our residents as a gold mine, then I think we're not mining the gold, because by having such a high unemployment rate, people cannot work and they cannot spend. And that results directly in sales tax. So, you know, I'm very much in favor of jobs, and more jobs, and more jobs. And I think we're missing the mark. So those are the, just the two observations I wanted to make. Thank you.
With that, let's see, what was your recommendation? We... Continue the hearing with, but do you need more?
Madam Mayor, at this point, I think with this discussion, you know, I need real specific direction. What do I bring back to the city council on July second, you know, for adoption? And there's a lot of discussion, a lot of good ideas up here. But at this point, I need to know, do I bring back, you know, what's before you? Do I make changes, specific changes to that? And if so, what are those changes?
Can I ask a little quick question?
Sure.
One I forgot, sorry. I made a note, and then I overlooked it. On the pool, I know that we have a wonderful group of volunteers called Promote Our Pool Foundation, and I know that they've done several fundraisers. Do we have any idea what those funds are going to be used for this year?
Yes. They, they just, actually just had a fundraiser, and the money that they're trying to raise is for pool blankets. We change our pool blankets probably every three to four years. And, you know, the existing blankets, that's the blanket that goes across the pool when it's not being used, to keep the heat in and keep it warm, helps to reduce our energy costs.
Okay.
And they're deteriorating, they need to be replaced, and they're trying to raise funds for that.
Okay, thank you.
They also provide scholarships for people for swim passes that don't have the means to get the swim passes themselves. So they generate revenue for us that way, too.
Madam Mayor, if I might, a very common technique for answering the questions that the city manager has, as far as what does he bring you as a specific budget on July second? A common technique is to take a series of motions that are non-binding motions, but express the sense of the council on specific items or specific changes, usually referred to as tentative budget decisions. They're not meaningful until they're incorporated into the final vote of the council to adopt the budget. But they give guidance moving forward and enable your staff to keep score as to what the, what the fiscal impact is.
Thank you, and they definitely need to have that direction. So that's, thank you for that input. So with that, does, does the council have any tentative motions they'd like to make and recommend, recommendations for adopting the budget for July second?
I'll make a motion, tentative motion. I've thoroughly studied this budget, I like it as is. And so my motion would be, is that we tentatively accept this budget, even though it includes, hopefully, getting more money, or maybe not. And we're going to review it in ninety days. I think the city manager said he was going to take a second look at the budget in ninety days. And we may have more revenue, or we may have less, but I would like to typically move that we accept it as is.
I have one question between, before we get a second on that. In considering the tentative additional revenues, we've added that into the recommended budget for item number ten, for example.
Which one is item number ten?
To, pertaining to sewer service charges?
Yes, that is, that is included in the budget, in the sewer budget.
Okay.
Well, I would ask for some clarification from our city attorney, if I'm doing this right, but a tentative motion in place of Rich's motion, that we look at investigating private companies to see if they could operate our system, our sewer system, at less operating costs than the city does. And, go ahead.
Well, first, first of all, there's, hasn't been a second
Okay.
to Mr. Anea's motion, and probably, as a regular process, you should find out if there's going to be a second, because if not, then his motion's not on the floor.
All right.
The second thing to consider, though, is that even if the city explored finding a private contractor to run the sewer plant, it's an extremely uncertain proposition that that would affect this coming fiscal year budget. It would probably take at least that long to solicit proposals, evaluate them, interview the candidates, you know, all of the things that would be involved in handing over the wastewater treatment plant to a private contractor, or to sell it. Is that, is that what I heard you say?
No, I didn't say sell it.
I'm sorry, okay.
I said operate it like Sam Koll does.
Sell it all.
Hire a, to hire a, then I had it right, to hire a private contractor to run it.
Right.
I think would be a major, a major undertaking, might, the impact on this year's budget, if any, would be extremely uncertain. So I would view that as kind of a separate, you know, agenda item, or direction to staff at this point to report back, but maybe not affecting the budget per se.
In addition to that, we would follow Rosenberg's Rules of Order with having a second to Mayor Protem's first motion. And then, then council member Westfall could make another motion.
She could, she could try to present it as a substitute motion.
Right, and we could vote on it first.
Right.
So that's how that works. So do we have a second on Mayor Protem's motion to adopt the budget as presented? I don't hear a second, so do we have another motion to present?
I have a motion to accept the tentative budget, draft budget, with lowering the attorney legal services by five thousand, lowering the firefighter incentives from forty-five to forty thousand, which is still a twenty thousand dollar increase, and well deserved. And to only cut the chamber's budget by ten thousand. And I would really like us to continue to research the dispatching, because I think that there could be significant savings there with Prop 172 research.
Do we have a second on that motion? I'll second that motion, then.
Okay, so at this point, I would come in with another tentative motion that we not increase the sewer rates right now.
That's, that's, that's a, actually, it's a item number ten, separate item at this point.
But it is in the budget.
It is in the budget.
But it is in the budget, so, all right, I'll need a little help addressing this. I would ask that we postpone addressing the increase of the sewer rates until such time as we can discuss in more detail, soliciting private companies to see if they could operate our system more economically and reduce costs.
Do we have a second on that motion? Hearing none, that the subsequent motion dies first, lack of a second. Could you please pull the vote for the first motion?
Yes, ma'am. Council member Westfall?
No.
Council member Shalong?
Yes.
Council member Hawley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Anea?
No.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes. Motion carries three to two. And we'll bring that back for our July second meeting.
Yeah. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
That doesn't balance, I'm sorry, that doesn't balance it, does it?
If I was following along, it reduces by twenty thousand dollars is what the, would do is, legal service by five thousand, again, legal service is, is kind of a variable, depends on how many cases you have throughout the year.
Right.
We just have to direct people to stop suing us.
So we, we, we take five thousand from the lawyer.
The, the, the fire incentive was reduced by five thousand.
So that's a total of ten.
That's ten, and then the chamber was reduced by ten thousand.
Which leaves us...
So it's a reduction of twenty thousand dollars.
Which leaves us under seven hundred thousand.
That takes, I'll have Ken do the quick math for me, because he's better at that than I am.
Just a point of clarification, this particular motion...
Just a point of clarification, this particular motion and what we just passed is just to give guidance, just direction, we can fine tune it at the next meeting. Because I'm not sure that the reduction at the chamber is what we need to have. I too think we need to get closer to a balanced budget. But I think that this gives us a guideline and I can see where we are for the majority of the budget. It's pretty well in place.
It leaves $17,000 over, is my figuring. Because it wasn't even, how much?
685. You would take about 50,000 over.
So we would, our bottom line would drop to 685,000 instead of 700,000. Okay, so, okay.
It bears more discussion, I think, at the next meeting, is what I'm saying.
But I think what the city manager wants is direction on how to balance that $17,000.
I need that discussion now. I mean, you know, when we bring back this budget to you on July 2nd, you know, I need to put a document in front of you, you know, based on your policy decision, on where you want, you know, these cuts to be made, or if you want these cuts to be made. If you have a, if you're making a decision to move forward with, you know, a non-balanced budget, and if you below, if you can lower that $700,000, you know, that's what we'll bring, you know, back before you. You know, but at this point, you know, I need some solid direction. You know, if it's only 10, 20,000, that's what we'll bring back before the council. If you want to, you know, get into the details and, you know, it was mentioned earlier here, some of the services that are provided, you know, by some of these fundings, like the Film Commission, yeah, that's a, you know, I think very important. You know, they just had a film here in Delano County, provided a film crew up here for 30 days. You know, but if the money's not there to fund that, you know, where do we cut? You know, or do we cut? And what's the value added, you know, to these services? So that's where I'm at, I need that direction.
And we just voted on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that will bring this back on July 2nd for the final vote on the budget. And we have no continuing business. We do have new business, and I'm sorry that you've had to wait so long. Consider appointments to the Delano Healthcare District Committee regarding regionalization. And we have Dwayne Reichlin here to speak with us about that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers. I'm Dwayne Reichlin, county resident, also a member of the healthcare district. And this is a fairly easy one compared to what you're dealing with now, but it has the potential to be very serious for every resident in Delano County. I think you're all aware of what they call Mother Sutter down in Sacramento is looking at trying to regionalize the hospital. And what we're doing as a healthcare district, actually, we, I came on the healthcare district board for the first time in 1986 when we were just finalizing the agreement with Sutter. And we had some alternatives in, but Sutter were the ones that came up with the right proposal. We went for it at that time. Now, there's been lots of changes, and as things change, economy gets worse. Everybody's looking at trying to save money. Sutter is looking at trying to control their hospitals from, basically from the Bay Area. And we feel that because we are in a very rural area here, that our hospital should have some local control. Regionalization might make sense in some of their other business decisions, but at least some of the decision-making should be done by the local people. And many, many years ago, that was part of the guarantee that they made, that it would be controlled or partially controlled by local folks. That is being taken away from us, or we think it may be. We want to put this committee together of healthcare professionals and also community leaders, sit down, have a roundtable discussion, and then go from there. So that's kind of where we're at with this thing. So we would appreciate, the board of supervisors put two people on there, one or two people from the city council would certainly be appreciated. And then probably, if not the tail end of this week, the first part of next week, we'll put a, some type of a meeting together and out at the wellness center out there, and we'll start formulating a game plan on how we're going to deal with this Sutter Health thing. Just what we need is another crisis in Delano County.
Yeah, I understand that it would reduce the number of beds from 45 to 29.
Well, that's the potential is to go to, Dr. Caldwell's here also to support me. He knows a lot more about the specific details.
And there would create a lot, a loss of jobs as well.
If it goes to acute care, the way that they have done in some of their other businesses, it could have a dramatic problem with job losses at the hospital, cutting the beds back, the education programs, the physician recruitment that we've been doing and putting together for the last few years. I mean, we don't know where it's going right now. Sutter has kind of backed away a little bit, so we're doing a lot of groundwork. Some of the other doctors are digging into this thing and we're putting a game plan together right now.
So are there questions from council members or Mr. Reichlin?
Not a question, but I would like to volunteer.
Thank you.
Mr. Reichlin, I just have one question. One thing that I think has sorely been missing in this area has been a hospice program. We don't have anything like that. And the local board really hasn't been able to formulate one in the recent past. And I don't know, would regionalization make that more possible?
Well, we really don't know. I know Dr. Caldwell might be able to answer that better than I am, but you know, that's one of the things actually that the healthcare district has looked at over the years also is, you know, how can we put hospice together, you know, some aging things to help?
I mean, there's hospice programs all around our community, but none here. I think it's tragic.
I think we did have one at one time.
I was a board member of a volunteer hospice, and then that got closed. Sutter Coast took it over, I think realized it wasn't a moneymaker, and it closed, and then we had nothing.
That's right, that's how it happened, right. Are there questions for Dr. Caldwell? Do you want to do any speaking? No?
Hi, I'm Kevin Caldwell. And I was, I was actually on the hospital board the last two years when they took the vote. And my main purpose for voting no was, I had been on this board for two years. Regionalization had just been brought up, and nobody had discussed the implications. And my point to the hospital board was, we don't know what we're voting on. We better just put it on the back burner, go out and do some studying, and find out what the specifics are that could happen to hurt this community. And let's put some safeguards in before we vote on this that are going to protect the community. That went nowhere. And so then I left the board and as chief of staff, and Greg Duncan took over, and he started doing the research. And he's uncovered so many facts of how losing a local control could severely hurt this community and economically severe job losses.
As well as the quality of the healthcare.
Yeah, there's the two columns, there's the quality of healthcare and the economic impact.
Right. We already lose around 44% of our medical services that bleed out of the area because we can't provide them here. And that's on the Center for Rural Policy report on the Humboldt State website, if anybody's interested in looking that up.
And this is happening at just the time when, with the Building Healthy Communities Initiative, we're looking at healthcare as being a place to expand private sector job growth in this community. And this is going exactly the opposite direction.
Thank you. So before council member Westfall volunteered, council member Shalong had offered to be on the board. And I've been in discussion with Kevin Caldwell, and read through the documents of Dr. Duncan, and talked with other people at the hospital. And so I would like to be on the committee. So I'm appointing council member Shalong and myself to your committee. And thank you for bringing that to our attention. And you know how to contact us. Okay, thank you. Okay, alright, so we don't need a motion, it's just my appointment's correct? Yes, okay, alright. So we'll move on to item number nine. Consider waiving, full reading by the title only, an ordinance number 769UN, ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, adding in chapter 8.20 fireworks to title 8, health and safety, and of the Crescent City Municipal Code.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to have Chief Plack present this to the city council. It is an urgency ordinance. It's a good idea to get this in place before the July 4th weekend. And so I'd like to have Chief Plack present that.
And he's done a lot of work on it, so please come forward, chief. Thank you.
Evening, Madam Mayor. Madam Royal Council, tonight, I'm asking you to consider an ordinance for the fireworks possession, transportation, and illegal commission of fireworks. The, this is no surprise of, it's come to this extent in where I am extremely concerned about the welfare and the safety of the citizens and the visitors. Moving up here over a decade ago, and a lot of individuals have obviously lived here longer than I have. But this has been a continuing process in trying to make this a more safer environment, particularly around July 4th. If you recall, back in around 2003, we shut down the park from vehicles and pedestrians. That was the first phase of this type of issue being addressed, because we had sideline type of fireworks display that are illegal within the park, within Howell Drive. We had vehicles with pedestrians there, we had people doing their own shows, obviously making it extremely dangerous for individuals that want to enjoy what the chamber has been so successfully for a number of years put on. Then what we did was we extended our enforcement as best we could through an educational campaign, in where we not eliminated, but cut down the use of people along the north of the lighthouse, and leaving Howell Drive alone for that to avoid any type of fireworks being displayed on the beach, possibly catching fire on homes, as well as shrubbery that are there on the beach. Then we made sure the educational campaign continued by putting posters up around. And that was enacted approximately three years ago when city manager Rod Butler had a committee formulated by myself, Chief Wakefield, several community leaders, and as well as CDF would join us in the discussions. You would see posters being displayed throughout the fire booths that are sold throughout the city, which are safe and sane. The only type of fireworks allowed in the city are safe and sane. Those are the only ones that are allowed in the state. The, with the success of July 4th, it has reached an uncontrollable numbers of individuals that decide to bring large out-of-state operations, shipping massive quantities of aerial displays and exploding items directly into Crescent City, and basically do that with very little repercussions. We do not have the manpower to be able to not only make sure our visitors are safe down in, down at the park area, we don't have the manpower to be able to do that and enforce all of the illegal fireworks that people are flooding, the 911 calls to the dispatch center, as well as to the police department, asking for police responses. These possessions of illegal fireworks places each and every individual at risk. Last year, we started to shut down the Point St. George Lighthouse parking lot, because people were having their own personal illegal displays, and that around vehicles with gas tanks being there. That creates a havoc of a situation for the welfare of the individuals that are up there, too. Not to mention the calls for service at the poor fire departments going on in these things through, not only just on July 4th, but a week before, as well as a week after. So therefore, we decided to take this one step further and to look into some senate bills. Senate Bill 839 was written into law by Governor Schwarzenegger in response to the fireworks and the citations being served. The, to people that decide to violate that law. These are dangerous fireworks that we're looking at. We're not looking at, you know, the sparklers or anything else like that, which is safe and sane, does allow. But the senate bill does distinguish between what's legal, what's illegal. And basically, illegal are the ones that fly, explode, and crawl across the ground. Everything else is legal. So trying to give the educational campaign through PSAs, through posters, through news media, through every viable venue that we have available to us up here, has certainly not gotten the word out to the individuals that feel that it's alright for them to bring down the fireworks and shoot them off within the city limits, as well as outside the city limits. I think it's high time to be able to enact an ordinance, take advantage of Senate Bill 839, in where it allows the cities to enforce these state laws, which we have done in the past, very sparingly, I might add, because everything goes to the state. But this is our resources in our community. All night you've been talking about the budget, it's not going to get any better. And I'll be honest with you, on the July 4th, you could not convince me there's a recession with all the fireworks that are out there, with carloads of fireworks. And all we do really before, because of the manpower issue, is confiscate them, put them on the back of the fire department, and in turn, put it on the back of CDF. And that's why Senate Bill 839 was enacted, is because it helps to curb the finances for CDF, for transportation and the removal, as well as the disposal of fireworks, too. This also allows us to be able to do a little bit more enforcement. And when an officer does write a ticket, there is some substance to this ordinance in where it allows the state, just like any type of summons that we write, we have to share it with the state, we have to share the, but this ordinance allows us to be able to have an administrative site process. And we have to have one in place before we can write citations, if any, on this. And this way, we can write the citations, get a little bit of substance to it, as well as being able to confiscate the illegal fireworks as well. I'd like to be able to do this before, I mean, lord knows, we do have enough serious injuries throughout the years regarding the fireworks and everything. But I think I'd really like to be able to try to prevent one bad accident or, because as you well know, when people do come into the city, there is, parking's at a premium, people are bunched together to a point in where they, I don't know if I would want to be sitting next to an individual that's shooting off some of these illegal fireworks with my kids running around. But everyone's crapped for space, particularly with downtown area, to see the fireworks that are a wonderful display, and it does benefit the city in so many different ways. I don't want them to have a bad experience, and I want them to be able to come back, too, and know that it is manageable, which it is not right now. And I think I'd like to be able to show the community, as well as the people that come in and want to visit, that there is, you know, we do have a handle on this problem past the reputation that we currently do have. And I think continuing with the educational campaign that we have, along with the enforcement aspect of it, I think this is to the phase of where we need to go in order to enforce the violations that do occur. Not only during July 4th, but throughout the year. the violations that do occur, not only during July 4th, but throughout the year, late at night, in neighborhoods as well, so.
Thank you. I'm in complete agreement. Do we have technical questions before I open it up for public comment? Go ahead.
CEO Code Enforcement Officer. Who's deemed a code enforcement officer?
The administrative sites can be issued by anybody that's on the list that currently that was approved by the council, not just the code enforcement officer. It can be police officers, it can be the finance director if he wants to, city manager. It's...we have a list, about 15, 20 people that are on that list that parks personnel can write those citations.
I wish we would have kind of started this conversation a little earlier than a couple weeks before the 4th of July. I know that we've been having the conversation for two years, but the actual ordinance, I think, coming up two weeks before the event, is a little short notice.
Yes, ma'am. I think the reason being for that is because we're not the only city that's experiencing this problem. This was brought to my attention by the California Police Chiefs Association, and where they've developed their own committee to combat this same issue throughout the state, and that's why this was brought to our attention.
And my other...my only other comment, unless Chief Wakefield wanted to add to anything that you said, was how was the amount of the administrative fine determined? Because it's quite high.
It is quite high, but the reason for that is...the reason for that is because the general law cities, that is what they are doing throughout the state. This is not just something we pulled up. It's between $500 to $1,000 for the first violation.
Other questions from other council members?
I have a quick question. Do you know if the...does the county have any such ordinance? Do you know?
I don't believe they do.
Okay. So, one thought is, if people have...I'm not suggesting this to people listening, but if they go outside the city, the enforcement will effectively stop.
Right.
And I'm a little bit concerned that we might, if people take this seriously, which we hope they will, I'm a little concerned that they may go into wooded areas and shoot those same fireworks off, and that could be...
Well, they're certainly going to go...they're certainly going to go to an area where they're not going to be bothered by law enforcement. We had this...it was the same issue when the city brought up the solicitation ordinance, as well as the camping in the city limits ordinance. So, I mean, the county can do what they want to do, but my patch says Crescent City. And so, therefore, I think if the...I think the county should absolutely right, considering the fires and everything that are...but they do have a lot more areas to hide from, but they want other people to see the shows, too.
That doesn't make it...it doesn't mean it's going to be legal in the county. It's still going to be a crime. Still a crime.
And the county can still fine under whatever, you know, code that they have.
Crime's only as good as its enforcement.
Actually, Cal Fire can go into the county and write them, and this is a state law, so there'd be the same fine.
Yes.
I'm suspecting that probably more than half of anybody that's shooting these off are out of towners, anyway.
There's a lot of truth to it.
They know it's illegal. That's why they're coming here.
I was just going to say, that's my concern, that some...a lot, I think, a significant number of people that shoot off the illegal fireworks are from out of town, and they bring them from out of town.
Right.
And I'm just afraid that they're not going to know about this when they arrive.
Well, the PSA's...the PSA's...a matter of fact, I just did a PSA on that that's going to be on the radio, chatting with the chief. We had two weeks of discussion regarding this as well. I'm sure the newspaper's going to carry this as well. And, you know, I think a lot of the articles that are written on it, people are going to look at it.
Plus fireworks...these fireworks are illegal anywhere in the state and in Oregon, so people coming in here already know it's illegal.
Sure.
They've just been getting away with it here because we don't have the people to enforce it.
We do get a lot from Washington State, and here, again, they bring truckloads in. And that violation is very strict. I think it's like a $10,000 fine. I mean, these are pyrotechnics that are extremely dangerous. We're not talking about a little firecracker here. We're talking about ones that are shake-the-ground when they go off.
Right. And this is... But all of those fireworks, I mean, a lot of them that you can buy right here at the local fireworks displays go up in the air.
Only ones that you can buy are the ones that are stamped "safe and sane" by the state fire marshal. I see only ones you can buy.
Oh, okay. Did you have something to say, Ms. Westphal?
Yeah, I just thought that the administrative penalties are very high. And I remember driving around one 4th of July night in the city, and lots of fireworks were flying, so.
It is a very dangerous hazardous situation.
Yeah.
It really is. I, you know, I looked at that fine myself, at $1,000 for the first offense, and I'm sorry, but the people that are the violators of it, if you're going to buy an expensive import car, if it breaks down, you're going to have to pay expensive import parts for it. And these are the people that have the money to pay for these fireworks.
They're expensive.
I mean, they are expensive. They're very...
Yeah.
You know, we're talking about $3,000 and up for individuals that want to have a good...their own personal show, and I...
I'm in complete favor of it. I...and they'll find out when they're here. You know, if they didn't listen to the radio, they already know they're illegal, they'll have a consequence. This gives us some teeth. My one question is technically, is we didn't...I didn't see in the ordinance a timeline for when the payment would be due. So, you know, you could say you're fined, you know, the $1,000.
Well, this ordinance was passed through by...I'm going to refer this to Mr. Black because that went through legal in it.
Well, and the late charge is a little bit ridiculous. I mean, the late charge on the $1,000 fine is $250.
I think it's fine. You know, we've had people's houses get burned, people's fingers blown off. It's...they're incredibly dangerous, and I'm in complete favor. But so, if Mr. Black could address the timeframe, but he has to go to court?
Well, the object is not they have to go to court. So, this would be handled by the administrative hearing process, as referenced in the very last sentence of the ordinance. And the administrative citation document and the administrative citation ordinance contains those timelines. I think it's 30 days.
I didn't see that. That's...I was looking for it, and I missed it, so.
Well, because this doesn't say that, but it's integrated with that.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks. So, 30 days. All right.
And by the way, let me point out that if fireworks are seized, illegal fireworks are seized, they have to be sent to the state fire marshal for disposal. And if they are sent to the state fire marshal for disposal, we also have to rebate a portion of this fine. So, we actually may only get 35% of the fines collected. So, although $1,000 might seem like a lot, the amount that the city may end up with if there's a seizure and we forward them to the state fire marshal for destruction is only $350, which is probably barely the cost of an officer having to conduct this enforcement.
It's definitely giving us some teeth for determine.
Yeah, I think maybe to put it all in a different way and put it in perspective for you, this isn't only about going up to somebody, writing a citation, saying, "Here, pay this ticket, buddy," and walking off. We have to seize these illegal fireworks. We don't leave them in their possession. And then they have to be disposed of legally by the state fire marshal. And so, it's a...
It's a process.
It's time-consuming. It's going to require shipping these materials. It's, you know, there's a number of things involved.
We do not have the facilities to be able to hold them either. And so, therefore, we need their cooperation on this as well, too, so.
Can you carry a scenario out for me just a little bit? If somebody comes from Wyoming and has a truckload of fireworks, and they're here, and they're cited in accordance with this ordinance, and they go back to Wyoming, what teeth do we have if they don't own any real property or anything in Crescent City and Delmar County? I just...I'm just curious about how...
The fine people of Wyoming would not do that.
Well, that's true. Make it Nevada.
You know, it's no...unless you want to answer that, Rob.
Well, I do want to...I just need to clarify. One thing is that if somebody comes here with a truckload, they are not...they are not subject to this ordinance, I mean, yeah, to this administrative process. It's only for 25 pounds and under. And the state law has provisions for 25 to 100 pounds and quantities in excess of 100 pounds. So, as you can imagine, when you start getting above 25 pounds, either above or below 100, the penalties become increasingly draconian because you're dealing with somebody who's actually...they're not just out there having fun, illegal though it may be. I mean, these are criminal elements that are going to make a profit on selling these...I almost said drugs, but selling these fireworks, illegal fireworks.
I think, you know, with the process that we're taking with the committee, you know, having the educational campaign and stepping up a little bit higher level on here now, I think it's really going to send a clear message that we're at least trying to combat this issue that we all recognize as being a problem that has grown substantially out of hand. And I think it's very important to be able to show the public that it's their welfare and their safety that we need to protect, visitors or residents.
Okay, with that, I'll open it up for public comment. Mr. Miles?
I believe this is...ordinance has been needed for a number of years. I want to tell you a story, Ms. Murray, and I think Chief Wakefield can verify this story. The first year that I ever moved here, I moved here in the spring, and I was invited to view the fireworks in the area that used to have the road that connected the city RV park with the harbor. And that was a popular place to go watch our fireworks, besides beachfront. I'll never forget seeing our ambulance having to come down on the beach to assist a young lady because her feet were badly burned because people were throwing, I think they're called M-80s. I've always...and after that, I figured our 4th of July, sponsored by our wonderful Chamber of Commerce, would just an open invitation for Sasquatch to come out of the hills to imbide...I'm aware that the liquor sales in Delmar County increases more on the 4th than it does on New Year's. When you mix these type of fireworks that mainly are sold in the west on Indian reservations in Idaho, Nevada, and Washington, and Sasquatch comes to town because of our legendary 4th of July celebrations, I don't think we have in the past put our best foot forward. And what really bothers me is Sylvia Boss and some other people have come to you people repeatedly and told you that this was a problem. So, Miss Long, why haven't we done this a couple of years ago? The time is now.
Is there any other public comment on this topic? Yes?
This is Janice Wilson. I've seen quite experience of people doing illegal fireworks. $1,000 is kind of like a penny to people to get in for these expensive and dangerous firearms. It's pretty much in the same category as, I don't know, real hazardous. I think that it should be taken a lot more serious. I think it's really easy for these illegal fireworks to be bought by just our local people. They make it very inexpensive to buy these things and to distribute them, and the more the merrier because it is harder to get ahold of these people that are putting them off. And that makes it even that much more extremely dangerous. I've seen them start doing these illegal fireworks at Kellogg Beach, two weeks before the 4th of July, three weeks before 4th of July. And so far, as far as I know, fireworks hasn't been a problem with causing a fire out there. But then, you know, who's to say that one day or sometime or another, it's going to be extremely expensive to put a fire out, whether it be in the city or out in the hills or mountains? I just think it should be taken extremely serious. A $1,000 ticket is really an insult to the city and to the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dillard?
This is a difficult one for me because I'm so close to law enforcement, and the fire department does such a wonderful job, and the law enforcement does, too, in their valid safety concerns. My issue is timing. You know, the triplicate brings it out Saturday and says, "Hey, it looks like a money raiser." Okay? Because we're in a budget crisis. The...this is no new issue. This bill was passed in 2007. In 10, 12 years ago, in law enforcement administrators for Delmar County, we talked about this issue. So, why is this such an emergent issue two weeks before the 4th, when the 4th is one of the four big venues in this county for filling the hotels and restaurants and stuff? You want to pass this? Pass it, but don't do it emergent. There's a lot of education posting that needs to be done before you do this. We can't afford to jeopardize our public interest. The triplicate reported in the last couple of years that 20,000 people came to the 4th of July. We only got 28,000 in the county, so somebody had to come from outside. This is an important issue. Pass it. Give it a year to do your education, your posting. Do not do your education this 4th of July. Go around and tell people, and get them informed that this is not going to happen next year. Then give the fines on the July 4th next year. But front-load this thing. Don't risk losing the...all the money we get out of this 4th of July. And the other half is, "Yeah, I agree with you. They'll go off in the bushes." And that worries me. I'd rather have them on the beach." And I didn't need my three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this topic? Seeing done, I have a closed public comment and bring it back to the council. Is there a...or discussion before I have a...consider an adoption of the ordinance?
I have a couple of comments.
It's the introduction, not the adoption, right? Adoption, sorry. Sorry.
I've been a member of that committee that the chief talked about, community members, and for the last two years, and that's what we started with. We started with education of the public. And we had signs where the people go down to the beaches the last two years that say fireworks are illegal. In fact, people want to...people don't even want to stay around fireworks with their kids. They want to watch our fireworks show, but they don't want to stay where people are using fireworks on the beach, dangerous fireworks. So, we've done the education. That's what we did for two years. That's what the chief was saying. It's now time for enforcement of doing it. And I don't worry about people that aren't going to stay here because they wanted to do something here illegally. I don't want them to be here in the first place. We want families here for the 4th of July. We don't need the problems. And I doubt very seriously if there's going to be many citations. There's a lot of work in just citing them, taking the fireworks, then you have to go to the station, or you have to find a place to put them. And there's very few officers to do that. But we've done the education for the last two years, and there's people on that board that wanted to do it the first year, wanted to do all the citations, and we stopped. We wanted the education process, then the next step is the citations.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just wanted to clarify. I'm in support of the ordinance. I was just concerned about the small amount of time and the significant amount of the fine. fine.
Yeah, I just want to state, I understand the timing issues as well, but I had a neighbor who, whose house burned down, and if this can stop a house from being burned down, I have, I'm in favor of it, and it needs to be passed, I think, as an emergency ordinance.
Can we, can we continue to put up signage at Beachfront Park as well as, I was thinking maybe the explorers and the VIPs handing out flyers during the parade about the actual fines, so that maybe we catch somebody that's from out of town that may not have read the newspaper or heard it on the radio?
Or maybe put it on the fireworks sellers?
Yeah, you know, I sat in on the committee, and we are addressing, you know, putting up, we'll be putting up signs on the barricades for that education. We have not talked about, you know, the flyers, you know, but, you know, we could, you know, copy, you know, some flyers for the VIPs to put out and, you know, make that happen. It's not a bad idea.
During the parade?
During the parade, sure.
We'll be putting it on barricades, putting it on the steps to the parks, on the, on the fireworks booths and storefronts. So that's what we've been doing for the last several years, so.
I just think maybe, you know, the flyer that says, "This year, $1,000 fine if you're caught with illegal fireworks."
Okay.
That's, that would catch my attention if I was just visiting and brought my illegal fireworks.
Okay.
So we could add that to the flyer. So is there a motion to adopt the proposed emergency ordinance?
I'd, I'd move to adopt the emergency ordinance numbered 769U, an ordinance of the City Council of the Crescent, of the City of Crescent City, adding Chapter 8.20 fireworks to Title 8, Health and Safety of the City Crescent City Municipal Code, and, and adopting this ordinance as an emergency measure.
Second.
Would you please pull the vote? Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong? Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Mayor Protamania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes, thank you. I think this is a great step in the right direction, direction of safety for the community. Thank you. Onto item number 10, which is to, to consider waive reading or by title only and introduce ordinance 770, an ordinance of the, an ordinance of the City of Crescent City Council revising the Crescent City Municipal Code by amending Title 13 Public Services, Chapter 1330 by adding Section 1330.017 pertaining to sewer service charges.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Weir to present this item.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yes, you, you've touched on this throughout the evening, and just want to commend you guys for your work this evening on the budget. It's not an easy task by any means. As far as the sewer rate increase goes, what we're proposing tonight is to raise the, the sewer rates to basically keep up with the cost of the, the rising cost of materials and supplies. To do that, we'd like to, like to utilize the Consumer Price Index, the CPI. We've compared the 2010 CPI to the 2011 CPI. This results in about a 3.2% increase. If you look at the residential sewer rates, this would be a $1.72 is what the increase would be. As, as, you know, has been the, the common theme, even with this increase, which would result in about a $100,000 increase to revenues, we're still in a deficit in the sewer fund. So as stated in Eugene's report, we would like to, we'd like to look at how the, how the plan is doing at the mid-year point, again, and come back to the council as we, as we really look at all of the expenses versus revenues as they're starting to come in. The plan's in oper, been in operation now for about one year, so we're starting to get some of the actual costs that have been projected over the years.
Can you just summarize? I know that we went out, just for public's knowledge, when we did the 218 process a few years ago, we were allowed to increase the fee by $30. $10 per year over a three-year period. This council chose not to increase those fees by that much in that time period. We also worked with the state, the staff worked with the state to work, extend our loan with a state revolving loan fund from 20 years to 30 years, which allowed us some more flexibility in increasing those rates. If we, if this council does approve this $1.72 increase tonight, can you just clarify that we are still under the $30 authorized by the 218 vote?
That's correct. With this increase in effect, we would still only be at $25. And like you stated, that was when the 218 was passed, that was it. It was set to be a three-year time period in which those rates were increased. It's since been approximately five years, and we're still $5 under what those rates were proposed to be at.
Great, thank you.
Eric, can you tell me, or can, can you tell me where we can see the cost of materials and supplies has increased? Where is the data? What page?
Sewer fund?
I'm sorry, what?
The sewer fund and the general fund. I mean, not the general fund. Interpress funds.
And under what categories? Yes, thank you for coming up.
I'm a big mouth, but not that big.
Yeah.
The CPI is generally an indicator from the, they do it regionally and then by, by the entire U.S. for all goods and services. So it is true that your cost of supplies and materials, which is going to be in there, but your cost of contracts and services are going to be affected by that CPI also.
Oh, what line item are you looking at? Can you direct me?
Page 39.
Uh huh.
Yeah, if you look down. Right. Ken, it's also for the, it'd be for the entire fund too, which I believe is pages 36, Ken, which would be the.
That's the summary.
The entire, so you're really looking at a.
388 to 450,000 is the increase in the materials and supplies for the entire sewer fund itself.
Okay, now.
But I, I don't think you could take and add 3.2% to that and say that that's what it is. We don't budget that way, but, I mean, as a whole, aggregate-wise, you know, bread costs a dollar last year, and the CPI went up 3.2%, you'd see it costing a dollar three, you know, the next year.
Okay, now, when we look back at page 37, under operating uses, it looks that our subtotal came down from 350,000 to 325,700. Was that $25,000 drop taken into consideration? Or were you only evaluating the materials and supplies?
When we build a budget, we're, we're not really, we're looking at actual estimates of expenditures. We're not going to say, oh, last year we spent $100,000, let's increase it by 3%. Now, when we're dealing with rates, we've structured the rates to be based on the consumer index, so we've had an increase so that the rate, the revenue coming in would keep pace with, with how those costs are going up as a whole. That's, you know, an economic indicator for the entire picture, not just one little, one little region. So it, it's basically a way of making sure your rates keep track with your expenses, but I would probably come down on any department head that tried to increase their budget just because of CPI. I mean, that is going to be a factor, but we look even deeper than that and look at details. That's why when we were discussing the pool, we were discussing propane. The initial estimate came that propane cost was going to be a lot higher. We started looking at it, did some research, found out, hey, we could negotiate a contract to save some money, and so that's kind of how it goes in.
Have you done the research to negotiate some of these materials and supplies as well?
Not myself personally. Some of the materials could have been done by the purchasing agent, but, you know, something like that is going to be a massive project that, that I wouldn't be involved in from the finance perspective.
Who would be involved in that?
I guess the Public Works Director and the City Manager managing the entire system. It's kind of a macro issue that you're bringing up there, not, it's not really just.
Some of these costs too, you take a look at, Madam Mayor, you know, even, I received information today, you know, just our medical, first, medical's increasing in our purse choice by 16% come January 1st. I mean, you know, that's, you know, overall, aggregately, you take a look at, you know, how we're operating and, and where this money's going, it impacts us. So, you know, it, it's all within that budget. I mean.
A private company wouldn't be operating under a deficit if it were running the.
Well, a private company, in my opinion, probably couldn't operate this plant for the costs that we are doing it. It would cost a lot more.
That's exactly my point. They would be increasing the rates significantly more than what this is recommended.
Are we predetermining this without any investigation? As to what a private company can do? I mean, other cities have private companies and a private part, a public partnership that work very well.
We never directed.
That's a whole nother issue. But back to the CPI indicator, you know, me as a finance person, if I see a budget coming in that says a 20% increase or a 10% increase, you're going to use the CPI because you would generally expect that. Now, we don't, we don't say, oh, the CPI's 3%, so we'll allow 3% increase. Gene and I and all the department heads included have been saying, all right, this is what we spent last year, how can we reduce that? So we're basically trying to undercut that, that's why it's such a bare-bones budget. When you're talking about contracting out, that's a whole nother thing that you have to go into bidding, and I've been involved in that and other utilities that I've worked for analyzing it, and it's not, it's not that much of a win-win. They have a lot of requirements that they're going to put on that you guys may have a lot of flexibility that you want in setting the rates and doing that kind of stuff. A private contractor that comes in and runs your city, they don't care about the community, they're producing a low-cost result to run the plant, and it's going to cost this much to do it. They don't really have a lot of empathy for rates and all that type of stuff.
They're in it for profit.
So this $30 increase would have been done two years ago if we would have been contracting this out, because they're not, I mean, time is money, and if we waste money trying to hold this revenue back, they're going to charge you for it.
Right. And companies are there for profit, we're here for service.
Yeah, it's definitely worth looking at, but it's going to take a lot of staff time and money to evaluate it, and it's not always a savings. If it was, you'd see more than probably 10 or 15%, maybe 25% at most of the utilities in the state in this region that are privatized. A lot of your privatized ones are going to be gigantic ones.
Right, and, and there has never been any suggestion or direction for staff to do that, so.
No, it's a very large project.
At this time, I'd like to discontinue that topic.
Well, getting back to my original question about the $72,000 increase in materials and supplies, Gene, have anything been done to shop these products, get a better price?
In everything that we are doing, you know, with our material supplies, contracts, you know, we're, are, you know, doing our best effort to get the best price, and, you know, we follow all of our purchasing, you know, procedures, you know, in, in going out, you know, and getting quotes and bids. So, yes.
Okay, and then maybe you can tell me what I can tell my constituents that don't have another $1.72 to pay for this.
I think that's being sarcastic, and I don't think we need to answer that.
I'm not being sarcastic. I'm asking a legitimate question.
I'll answer it. We're the lowest in the region. So if a person is living here, they're not going to find the rates any cheaper. Brookings is raising their rates 8% per year.
Yeah, but are they as high as ours?
They're higher. I was just looking at the chart. Brookings rates are higher than ours right now. So that's what I would tell my constituents, that it's $1.72 because we have to keep up with the Consumer Price Index.
And expenses.
And expenses. That's, I meant, it's expenses.
Any other comments from other council members? With that, we will consider a motion for adoption and bringing it back to the public. Bring, adopting the motion, rather, adopting ordinance 770.
Madam Mayor, have we opened to the public?
Oh, I'm sorry, I haven't opened it for public comment, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's getting late.
It's getting late. Mr. Miles?
Ms. Murray, thank you for putting the knife in my back again, because with, with this raise of the water and sewer, my landlord will increase my rent because she's done it before. And I think Donna's remark is how, how are you guys going to explain this to the people that voted for you? That was a legit question that lady asked, because the current rumor around town is you've got some major problems at your wastewater plant, and is this increase because that some of your motors and pumps need to be replaced because of some poor design factors at our wastewater plant?
Thank you.
So I hope you would take the knife out of the backs of our senior citizens.
Thank you. Other public comment?
I was wondering if, is, is it because of the reason why Brookings maybe has a larger increase is because they're larger and they actually stimulate more economical stance?
Can I answer?
Financially, economically?
The reason Brookings is raising its rates so drastically is they didn't fix their sewer plant like we did. We fixed ours. Now they have to fix it, and so the rates are high. We fixed it when the prices were lower.
Yeah, I was just trying to think because Brookings, a lot of people go to Brookings for gas. Another point of matter was, because I know that people are really financially struggling at work and they run businesses and stuff, they're, they're smiling, but they're, it's hardcore for them to actually try to enjoy life. Okay, so, and, and actually keeping their money stimulated here versus go shopping someplace else, we're going to get better buys, me included. So another point was, the sewer and the septic system, septic tanks and the water through wells, is the city sewage and water, is there point of matter to actually possibly in future overtake these personalized or property-owned sewer and wells?
Septic tanks are in the county. We don't, we're not taking those over.
Is it, is it, is it, do you feel like it's a positive influence that people are self-maintained that way?
I have no idea.
Can I ask them if that's?
No, no, you, if you have more questions, you can ask staff at City Hall tomorrow, and they can answer.
Thank you.
Back for more. Joseph Faly, he lives in the city. What are our alternatives to go back to dumping in the ocean and on septic tanks? I mean, I think this is a competitive thing. I think we need to do this. My parents have a septic tank. It cost my dad $15,000 to put in a new system, all the leach lines, all, I mean, it's just a mess. So I think we're very competitive with our pricing here, and we need to have this for environmental reasons as well. Fishing in the ocean, I mean, I, I think, I think it's, I think it's competitive, I think it's pretty good.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, then I'll bring it back to the council.
Looking for, our recommendation is to approve.
So.
Tough night, cutting expenses, raising fees, never anything that's an easy task for this council, but it's needed, so. I move to read by title only and introduce ordinance number 770. Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Crescent City revising Crescent City Municipal Code by amending Title 13 Public Services, Chapter 13.3 by adding Section 13.3 0.017 pertaining to sewer service charges.
Second.
Could you please pull the vote? Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Holly?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Mayor Protamania?
Yes.
And Mayor Murray?
Yes, thank you. That concludes the, um, regular items and we'll move to city council items. Any legislative matters that we, that we have on, that we need to be informed?
Yeah, I don't have any updates, uh, from our previous meeting. I'm still tracking the redevelopment. And do have a couple of updates to just provide the council, if, if I may.
Yes, please, as your city manager, report?
Yes, the, uh, on, is discussed, brought up, uh, this evening on our dispatch agreement. Uh, we had our meeting at, uh, the Crescent Fire Protection District with the, the rest of the boards. Uh, we, as a city, have our own dispatch agreement with the county. Uh, it, it was a two-year agreement. It expires end of July. You know, we're reviewing that at, at this time. Actually, I sat down with Mr. Black and, uh, Mr. McDonald, uh, today. So we're taking a look at the, that agreement. And I'll bring that back to the city council, probably July sixteenth meeting, uh, for, with a lot of information that was, uh, asked at that, uh, meeting at, at the fire district. And then hopefully at that point in time, I can have an update on, on where the fire, uh, boards are going, you know, with dispatching services. The second item, uh, just real quick, there is a fire academy graduation. Firefighter One Academy graduation thir, this Thursday.
The twenty-first.
The twenty-first, at the Cultural Center at six PM. Uh, and are there, are we going to have an email or something going out possibly? I'll get, I'll get you an email.
Robin actually sent us an email.
Okay.
Like, right after the last council meeting.
Okay, so just as a reminder.
Thank you.
That is happening on, on Thursday.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That was it. Thank you.
All right, uh, councilmember Westfall, you have anything to report out?
I attended, um, the Tri-Agency's Economic Development Meeting and the Redwood Coast Transit Authority Meeting and the IGRC meeting, which was canceled. So that was a surprise.
Sorry.
Uh, just, um, as much as I've complained about Bob Black and thinking he's in conflict of interest for representing so many agencies, tonight I have a hearty heartfelt thank you when he was my witness in an auto accident involving a bicycle that struck me in my car. So thank you, Bob.
Civic duty.
We're glad.
Civic duty.
We're glad you weren't hurt. Councilmember Shalong?
Uh, thank you. Um, I would like a, a report on IGRC because we've had the last three meetings, I think, in a row canceled. So I think you were going to look into that and I'd like to find out if we're just going to cancel the committee or if we have to keep, keep it on our calendars. Attended the fire district meeting, uh, which I thought was very informative. And we've had budget meetings, um, I've attended chamber meetings. And, um, very much enjoyed Keith Doyle's retirement party. And wish him well. That's it, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Holly?
Yes, thank you. Um, many of the meetings that the other council members have mentioned, I was, uh, pleased to be in attendance. The fire meeting I thought was particularly interesting regarding dispatch. I had no idea the complexities involved in that process. And I appreciate, uh, how difficult it will be as we move forward with how to do that in our region. I think I, I always try and, time is moving so quickly, I try and figure out when I had my last meetings with some of these. But Tri-Agency meeting, I know I was at that. And of course, the budget workshop, which was informative and, and provided us the basis for tonight's actions or discussion. And, uh, and the, uh, we did have a closed session on negotiations, which, uh, which I am always interested in, uh, given my current position with the school district, so, anyway, that's, that's what I've done.
Mayor Protam?
I was away for a few days last week. I went to Sacramento and attended the, the Public Safety Committee meeting and it's, it's very interesting. The, uh, uh, the state is trying to figure a way to take more of our vehicle license fee money away. Our committee voted no. Part of that goes to law enforcement. And, uh, the other one that was interesting that we talked about tonight is about fireworks. The fireworks industry, TNT and the other companies want the state to amend the law to make fireworks legal from the, from December twenty-sixth through January second for New Year's. And the Public Safety Committee voted sixty to zero to, uh, oppose that law based on several reasons. Among them is they have enough trouble, law enforcement agencies have enough trouble with people shooting firearms on the, on January first at midnight. You don't want children in the street, um, possibly getting hit by, uh, a bullet. Plus, there's a lot of intoxicated drivers in several cities. And New Year's Eve is not the time to have fireworks legalized to do that. So that went back to, uh, committee and is, is being, I don't know if it's completely gone, but it's not going to be for this coming year.
Thank you. So, um, one thing I wanted to mention was the election results. It was disappointing that we had such a low voter turnout. And so I'm hoping that in November, we'll have a better participation by our community because, um, your votes do matter to us. And, and if you want to see things, um, change, then you need to get out there and vote. So, then we had, um, a budget meeting on the sixth. Um, I attended, um, the local transportation meeting on the seventh. Another closed session budget meeting on the eleventh. I had the incredible honor. Um, it was, uh, quite a thrill to be invited to the Redwood School, Redwood Cutting for their, um, new playground. The kids, um, Principal Paige Swan explained that they, each class had the opportunity to choose pieces of the, um, playground equipment and not only choose what they wanted, slides, et cetera, but the colors and the combinations. And so, um, the kids designed the whole thing and they were so thrilled to have the whole thing happen. They were, they were extremely cute and, uh, gave me hugs when I had nothing to do with it, so.
Smith River School?
Yeah, Smith River School.
Yes.
Yeah.
Redwood and Fort.
Yeah, I, I said, I said Redwood, yeah. Yeah, Smith River, yeah. So, but it, they, it would, they were just so cute and I'm so happy for Smith River. And, uh, it's a great community out there. Um, I attended the, uh, Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting and there is on our next agenda to consider, um, a rate increase for, um, the fares. And so, um, we're not the only one struggling with budget. Just to forewarn the public, um, the joint dispatch meeting, it was very, um, and, um, informative. And, um, I think it might be a prudent way to go for our region and, and be more supportive of one another in our callouts and eliminate unnecessary callouts for certain, um, uh, public safety response teams. Then we had the farmer's market, um, on Saturday. And I hope all of you that are fathers had a wonderful Father's Day. And then we are still continuing our plans to host the Redwood Empire California League of Cities meeting, um, here on July thirteenth. And, um, Robin and I have been working on that. And then we're, um, we're, uh, we're having Vita Caccina cater, so that'll be really nice. Klamath, um, there's a meeting, um, on the twentieth for the Klamath Scenic Byway, um, from one to six down at, at the Euro Tribal Office if people are interested. And then again, the fire graduation at the Cultural Center. And then there will be a new warden sworn in, um, for Pelican Bay on the twenty-third. And I just want to remind anybody that's watching or listening that, um, we had extended the deadline for the Solid Waste Ad Hoc Task Force Committee to, uh, June twenty-fifth. So you still have time to submit one. We got, we did get one, uh, city resident applicant and that's what we were looking for, was a, a city resident. So that's all I have to report and with that.
Madam Mayor, before you adjourn, could I ask if we ever found out how many people can be appointed to the Solid Waste Task Force?
That's never been reported to myself. I have no idea. And, uh, unfortunately, Mr. Miles has left, so.
I think, uh, I think you guys were doing the research.
Oh, yeah, actually, I was going to answer that question if you don't mind.
Oh, sorry, Robin.
No, no, it's fine. Um, okay, so the answer that I was given is that they have a board of eleven, but there was nothing really governing that they had to have eleven. However, there are two vacancies available, so they've allowed the city to have those two.
And that's why we're rekeeping it open because the two first applicants were county residents and we were hoping to have city residents for input. So I will adjourn the meeting, um, until July second at five PM at the Flynn Center here, at five o'clock.